Roll call, please. Hold on. Invocation.
Yo, you're okay. Mr. Chair, council members, today we have with us Mr. Justin LaRosa, who is one of the ministers at the Hyde Park United Methodist Church. He serves as director of the portico and the minister of the Sunday evening congregation. The portico provides gathering spaces and spiritual opportunities that focus on conversation, connection, and community change. The portico cafe is on site, which is a cafe that is not only providing amazing coffee, food, and space for group events, but is entirely staffed by people who were formerly homeless, addicted, or incarcerated, offering people opportunities to rebuild their lives. He is also an author and licensed clinical social worker with part-time private practice. His greatest joys are his wife and his two teenage daughters. Mr. LaRosa, would you please give us the invocation? And if anybody could please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you so much. Bless pray. God of many names, we gather in your presence this morning, centering ourselves on your goodness. We come with open minds and grateful hearts, offering thanks for the very lives that you've given us, this city and the opportunity to serve. Thank you for engaged citizens. Thank you for the city council, their aides, and all the support staff, the mayor, and all the employees who work behind the scenes to make Tampa function and thrive. We pray for downtown residents and workers and those citizens who advocate and invest their time and talent to build a more inclusive and diverse city. The Hebrew scripture employs us to seek the welfare of the city. It reminds us over and over again not to forget the needs of the poor. Come to our assistance as we deal with the struggle of adequate affordable housing. Keep us mindful of the people and families who are spending more than half of their wages on housing and those who don't have a place to lay their head. Help this council and all that are here construct a city that builds on our many strengths and takes care of all of its residents. We humbly ask that you provide astute discernment, clarity, and direction to each council member as they process the many issues and reports. Allow their discussions to be productive and respectful even amidst disagreement being centered on your goodness. We thank you and ignite us to be the people you've called us to be. I pray these things in Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen. The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Dingfelter? Goods? Vasco Alco?
Here.
Citro?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
Here.
Here. Okay, we're gonna go to approval of the agenda. And before we go there, I just wanted to acknowledge all of our sentiments and sympathies to our friend and our colleague John Dingfelter and your family for your late father Simon. God bless you, sir. We mean that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dad was a great guy. He's the reason I'm here. He was a leader, a leader in this community. Everything he joined, he became president of. And he'll be missed greatly, and I appreciate the sentiments from city staff, from council, and everybody in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. God bless you. Next, we move to approval of the agenda. I want to go through the items that have been pulled. As a councilman Carlson, you had one, correct?
Yeah.
Twelve?
Number 12.
Okay, 12. And then councilman Dingfelter, you had 24 through 27, 30 and 32. Is that correct?
Correct, and that's not a hostile poll.
Sure.
Actually, a very favorable poll. And I also would ask that we continue if you would like. There's item 54, which is sort of a sustainability report. And I think we, right now, we have one of those scheduled for February 6th. So why don't we just combine it all? Hopefully, maybe we'll have a sustainability officer by then and we can get, sort of get going on those issues. So I'll move item 54 to be combined with the same item on February 6th.
We have a motion by councilman Dingfelter, a second by councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then I would like to, if I may, because I know we have F dot here on time-limited basis for 52, the Bush Boulevard, to be moved after 3, if I may.
So moved.
Motion by councilman Citrus, second, I believe by councilman Goods, all in favor? Yes, sir?
Aye. Oh, and if I can, I believe Ms. Wells has a request for attention, to put the public and council on notice as to an item that's gonna be coming up that has to be handled at 10:30.
Thank you, Mr. Shelby. Good morning. Kate Wells with the City Attorney's Office. Item 47 is an application for Brick Street removal. When you open that item at 10:30, if you can continue it to February 6, 2020, the reason being, we are negotiating a development agreement that is related to that project, and we would like both items to be considered at the same time. I spoke with Tyler Hudson, counsel for the developer, and he is in agreement with the request to continue. Thank you.
Should that motion be made at this time?
No, 10:30, please. Or whenever it comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for approval of the agenda, gentlemen? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move now to ceremonial activities, to number one for our ATU Local 41464 Employee of the Month.
Do you wish to approve the agenda?
I do wish to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by councilman Citrus, second by councilman Alco, all in favor? Any opposed? Go for it, sir. And councilman Goods is coming up for our City of Tampa ATU Local 1464 Employee of the Month. It's something that was recently started so that we can make sure that all of our City of Tampa employees are being honored here before council.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
It is my pleasure, you know, I knew we had this coming up this morning, and you read so much stuff, and I didn't realize the last name on the accommodation. Didn't realize it. And then I see you this morning. You know, it's good when you can give accommodation or good cheer to someone you actually know, that you know has been doing some work, has been working with our young people, especially the step programs you've been doing. I don't know if you're still at Oak Park or not, but I know what you've been doing out there and the other activities you've been doing in the city. So it's a great honor and a pleasure to me to bestow you accommodation from Tampa City Council as the ATU Employee of the Month. And again, it's a great honor that I do this. Tampa City Council Accommodation President Beverly Higdon, ATU Local 1464 Employee of the Month. Tampa City Council proudly commends Beverly Higdon as the ATU Local 1464 Employee of the Month. She is a sterling example of high-quality employees that the ATU provides to keep the City of Tampa running. That is true because we have a hard job with our young people. Beverly is a Recreation Leader 2 of the Parks and Recreation Department. She has served at least two generations of youth in team participations and has always seeking to empower young people, especially young girls and children with special needs. Not only does she have deep compassion for serving children, but her colleagues also support that she is a go-getter and a problem solver who has never hesitates to fish in a smile. Through her dedicated work, Beverly has made a tremendous impact on the lives of countless young people across the city. For a dedicated outstanding service to the City of Tampa proudly presents the combination this 5th day of December, 2019. And again, I can truly say I know what you've done. I know when I had all the football fans that would travel with us. So Steve, I think Steve, the ATU president, has something to say, and then we'll get to the good finale, the goodies.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Beverly Higdon has been employed with the City of Tampa Parks and Rec Department for 19 years. She has worked at various community centers, which include Highland Pines, Jackson Heights, and she is currently based at Oak Park Community Center. During her tenure with the Parks and Recreation Department, she has been a tremendous inspiration to all those that she works with, as well as those in the community. Beverly has touched many lives, from youth to seniors. Her outgoing, energetic, and helpful demeanor allows her to have influence on the youth in our recreation programs, as well as being able to lead and guide our active seniors in the community.
Amen.
Beverly has been an exemplary employee, and she is a true example that keeps in line with the Parks and Recreation Department's vision and mission about the community's needs and for recreation and learning opportunities to benefit the health and well-being of all the citizens that we serve. And so, on that note, if I may, I would like to present you from ATU Local 1464 with a combo gift card package for dinner and a movie.
All right, thank you. Good morning, love. Thank you again.
On behalf of Lotus Forest, here's some nice flowers.
Get my flowers while I'm living.
And on behalf of Bush Gardens, there's four complimentary tickets for admission.
Okay.
And on behalf of Patrick's Restaurant, we have a nice meal for you.
Thank you.
And also, on behalf of the Double Trudy, that's United Day and...
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, yes, yes. My class.
And councilman, oh, and I think we have, I think we have steps towing and Mr. Michelini as well. More gifts.
Congratulations. Your job well done.
Thank you, thank you.
You deserve it. On behalf of Steps Towing Service, Todd Step, I present you with a $50 Cheesecake Factory gift card.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, my God, I'm overwhelmed.
You want something else?
Get it to the I set.
What's behind door number three?
Uh, retirement.
Here's door number one, okay? You can go enjoy yourself at dinner at Corbeechi Italian Restaurant.
Okay, all right.
Here's door number two. You can enjoy yourself at Yummy House China Bistro. Door number three, Chicho's Restaurant Group and one other restaurant. And there's the gift certificates. Enjoy yourself and thank you for your...
Thank you. Oh, thank you so much. Do you want to go? Yes. Well, first, I would like to give honor to God, who's the head of my life. If it wasn't for him, I couldn't have did everything that I'm doing. To my coworkers, to my seniors on the move, and to my parents and my family, I love you and I thank you so much for building me to be the person that I am. With that, Merry Christmas. You know, Mr. Chairman, as you can see, you know, it all starts in our communities with our Recreation Department. You know, Mr. Miranda said it best, you know, the joy of the start of young people, it starts in the communities with our Parks and Recreation Department. You can look at Sewer Water, but it starts in those communities. As you can see, the seniors are here, they're very vocal in our communities because they've gone through, and their children, their grandchildren have gone through the Parks and Recreation Department. So a shout-out to the Parks and Recreation Department for the job they're doing. And again, we just think to thank you for the work that you've been doing. Thank you so much.
Anything for the council?
Councilman Goods, thank you. I had the honor, Sonia invited me to y'all's recreation holiday party a week or two ago, and it was so much fun, and there's so much enthusiasm in your group, and I see you brought it with you.
Yes.
But we appreciate, you know, for years, we loved the police, we loved the fire, and for years, I always wondered why we didn't honor the rest of the employees. And I'm so glad that, you know, you guys decided to do this, and you're, I think, our third honoree, and well-deserved. Now, the question is, is you brought all these folks with you, and which ones are you gonna take to the dinner here and there? I got some nod here. Congratulations, Ms. Beverly.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, you know, in the words of Sister Sledge, "We are family."
That's right.
And I thank you for being part of the City of Tampa's family. Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to you. Things sometimes go unnoticed, and it's been unnoticed for many years. And thank you for what you've done with your whole department. And next Saturday, I believe, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, is the big dance at Reggins Park.
Correct.
All of you women, bring your dancing shoes, because I'll be ready.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am, for all your hard work. We began this so that we could make sure that all of our City of Tampa employees are honored, and where we respect work, we respect the time that goes into work, we respect the sacrifices you make in your personal life and with your family for your work, and we're here to respect you today. So thank you, ma'am, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next, we move onward to item number two. Councilman Miranda, Conga Caliente.
Honorable Chairman, honorable members of Tampa City Councils, my pleasure this morning to make a presentation to something that started back in 2004. In fact, the first event that this fine family members brought together attended a whole whopping 200 people. And I think there's a video that is on the record to be played, and if they could put it on now, I'd appreciate it. Well, evidently, we have a delay. This is about Conga Caliente and what they are, and who they are. Conga Caliente, as I said, started in 2004 with only 200. After that, it has drawn an average of 60,000 people at Al Lopez Park. And the best price about it is the price is very reasonable, extremely reasonable, because it is free. And when they get together, it's not about all the people who sit here, it's not about the stage, it's not about just the music. It's about the arts, where they have a section to show you what art can do to a young individual's mind. It's about education, where they show you what it is to have an education. It's about yourself and how you take yourself to the medical area when you go and find out all you need to know about your personal health and how to get life and complete life very healthy. And I'm pleased to have Maritza Cortiza and Alex Cota, along with the Cota family here, and Mr. and Mrs. Cortiza, the solid partners behind the whole show. It's my pleasure to watch this video with you, and read that. I was talking about the mayor.
Charlie, what's the date?
It changes every year. It's the first Sunday.
The first or second Sunday of November.
And next year, it falls on November the 1st, Sunday. I don't know if you're gonna have it the 1st or the following Sunday.
Depends on the bye week with the Buccaneers because of the stadium and the park.
In fact, I remember Mayor Buckhorn saying that Hispanic month doesn't end until Conga Caliente plays the last note. And that's how it was. And this started under Mayor Oreo.
Yes, it did. Yes, it did.
And so if you look at that, these four individuals, especially these two, Alex Cota does the production and the sound, and fantastic, Alex Cota, if you don't know, was one of the first originators that worked at the Fountain Blue Hotel, where he did all of the sound production for that fine operation that was there for many years. And another Tampanian, Gabby Gabrielle, was the lead singer there. They bring individuals from all over the country, from Panama, from Jamaica, from Cuba, from Venezuela, from Costa Rica, from all those individuals who are the top performers. They bring four or five groups every year, and again, it's free. And they've done such an outstanding job that when you look at it, they have, in the 15 years or so, have drawn between 900 to a million people at the Al Lopez Park for free. That's something that I don't think anyone can accomplish, anyone can ever do. It is the largest Hispanic celebration in the whole Tampa area. That includes St. Pete, Clearwater, Tey, Plant City, all the areas around us. And it's one of the largest in the country. They have the arts with dominoes, like I said, they have domino tournaments, and dominoes, you learn how to play, you have to be very lucky to win. I've seen some champions get defeated by individuals who know very little, with just the luck of the draw, how you pick up your dominoes and how you lay them down. But it's my pleasure to make this presentation to both Maritza and Alex for their continued Conga Caliente, which I said is a wonderful event, and it's for free. It's a family operation. It's a family where you see families with kids, grandparents, aunts, and uncles, and they all go together as a group, something that sometimes in society we have not kept up with. We've become loners and technicians of talking on your cellphone to yourself. That's how bad we've gotten. But it's my pleasure, Maritza, to present this combination to you, based on the city councils, to you and Alex for what you've done for the last 16 years. It's amazing what you've done, you and your family, because I know your parents have helped you a lot. And it's my pleasure again to say congratulations to you, and the floor is yours.
So, years have gone by, so now I wear glasses. And if you bear with me just a little bit, I wanted to give you a little bit of background. Conga Caliente, the Parks and Recreation had a festival called International Festival, and as Charlie was saying, it had been about 200 people. And so Mayor Oreo, through the Parks Department, especially Nilo Menendez, decided that there was time for International Festival to maybe grow and become something that was for the Hispanic community to celebrate arts and culture. And we were fortunate enough that they came to us to ask us to put this together. So Nilo, myself, and Alex went to Al Lopez Park, because Alex chose the park, and Nilo said it had to be in park, of course, because it was Parks and Recs. And then we parked, chose Al Lopez Park because it was Al Lopez, named after Al Lopez, and it was in West Tampa, perfect park. We all talked about how we're gonna do it, how we're gonna raise money. Alex insisted it was always gonna be free as much as we could because it was to be able to bring families together, and it happened. Okay, so we planned the first festival, and Nilo said, "Mayor would be happy if we have 1,000 people." And I said, "Oh, my gosh, we gotta bring 1,500." And 20,000 people showed up to the first Conga Caliente. Tom Berry, oh, my goodness, he didn't know what to do, but he, you know, instead of complaining about it or something, TPD said, "Okay, what are we gonna do next year?" Now, in order to put this together, we needed support, and we needed help. We went to The Times, and Donna, who's now with the Parks and Rec, was the first person on board to say, "Hey," the Tribune, excuse me, Tampa Tribune, was on board and supports us. Then we went to Bay News 9, and Debbie said, "Okay, you know, we're on it." So with this support of all these people, we were able to put this together. There was a lot of people, our family, of course, our parents, and the Morgados, Randy, Melissa, and the girls, Alexis and Natalie, basically grew up in there. But there were a lot of people that came together to do this, and I wanted to let you know that this event is a city event as well. It was born out of the city. It was born for a purpose, you know, to be a quality event for the family. And it's been our honor. It's not really what our business is. We do it because we want to. Our business is production for other people. It's been an honor to do this, and if it weren't for people like the mayors along the way, the support we get from the Al Lopez staff... the support we get from the Al Lopez staff, and Charlie and Mary, you know, you know, it's been a love and it's been great to see people enjoy themselves. And, you know, sometimes we've toppled 60,000 people, you know, and we have become one of the top events in the state of Florida. It's a great destination event. It's now expected, it's part of tradition, it's been going on 16 years, but I'll leave with a little known fact. Conga Caliente celebrated, actually, its 17th festival because the first one, we had to cancel because of a hurricane within less than 24 hours of the show. Conga Caliente was first called Festival Caliente, and that was named by Neil Menendez from Parks. And then we switched it because Universal Studio decided to put something similar, so we went with Conga Caliente. And so those are little tributes, and thank you for all the council and all the city people who have supported us along the way. And it is a joint venture and we work on it together and we're very proud. There's a great educational piece now. We partner with Hillsborough County School Systems, there's a professional stage for the kids, there's an arts area, there's a health area. I don't know what to say. It's been our honor to continue to do this.
I need your help.
You need help?
Yeah.
If you need help, you better call somebody else. I'm out of help.
Well, esto es una tradición. Yo lo digo en español y tú lo dices en inglés, right?
Right. He said, "This is a production that's going to be, we're speaking in Spanish and I'll translate into English." Who knows if I say the right thing?
They're real English. Quiero darle las gracias a todas las personas que nos han apoyado. Sería una lista muy grande, especialmente a la ciudad de Tampa, al gobierno de Tampa, a cada alcalde que ha pasado y ha apoyado el evento, a Charlie Miranda, a su secretaria, a muchas personas, son muchas, a TPD, que también me ha apoyado, aunque trabajamos mucho con TPD, pero quiero darle las gracias también a mi esposa, a mi familia.
Charlie, because Charlie is going to...
I got the wrong member.
Y especialmente a Charlie, que ha estado en los 16 eventos que hemos nosotros producido. La idea de este fue que yo escuché siempre decir que Tampa... Hold on. I know you can translate later. Tampa es una ciudad para criar niños o para educar los niños o para que los niños crezcan. Por eso fue la idea de crear un evento familiar. Ahora traduce lo que tú quieras.
Now, let me see if I can get this right. Tampa's a wonderful city where kids, you know, go reach your family and have a nice time and enjoy life, education-wise and so forth. And it started way back with the Cotas and the Cortizas and the government of City of Tampa, especially in the mayor's office. I think it started with Mayor Oreo, if I recall.
Right.
And it's been a wonderful event that has been growing. It's like grass, it keeps on moving if you don't cut it. And it hasn't been cut in 16 years. They have the attendance that they have, wants to thank all the former council members, all the former mayors, the present council members, and all that have attended and those now that plan to attend. Because once you go on national television here, like we have in City of Tampa, one of the largest TV areas in the country, I think we're up about 12th in the whole nation, you will be getting maybe more than 60,000 people. So your pockets better get deeper. He didn't say this, but I'm saying this. Your pockets better get deeper because you're going to need more resources to handle the crowds. But it's been their pleasure to do this on behalf of all the citizens and all the actors who come in and do it for the City of Tampa and the surrounding areas to have the time of their life that they have during this time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we move to item number three, a presentation by our friends with the 13th Judicial Court, who are here. And we see here our friend, the Honorable Judge Figueroa, the Chief Judge for the 13th Judicial Circuit. Your Honor, good to see you today, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. I want to thank Councilman Goode for inviting us here to discuss the good things we are doing with our juvenile diversion programs in the 13th Circuit. We're here to speak on the collaborative efforts of the court's key juvenile diversion stakeholders. We've got Travis Coy from the State Attorney's Office, representing our State Attorney Andrew Warren, Rocky Broncato from the Public Defender's Office, representing Public Defender Julianne Holt. And together, we are successfully diverting youthful offenders, ensuring less interaction with our much more punitive juvenile justice system, keeping them out of the courthouse. And I think the key to that success is that collaborative effort. We're very fortunate here in Hillsborough County. We've got a really unique relationship. All of the stakeholders in our courthouse work well together, the State Attorney and Public Defender included. You know, normally, an adversarial relationship, they come together and work on key issues to benefit the citizens of Hillsborough County, and this is certainly one of them, our juveniles. That's what we're here to take care of, much like there was discussion of juveniles being involved in the arts, juveniles being involved in parks and recreation. That's where we want our children to be, not in the courthouse facing criminal charges. I'm personally very proud of our Juvenile Mental Health Court, which I preside over. It is the only juvenile mental health court in the state of Florida. We started it in January of this year. We've had 90 children go through our juvenile mental health court. They find their way to that court after being found incompetent due to either mental illness, intellectual disability, or age and immaturity. The collective goal of our Juvenile Mental Health Court is to enable youth to avoid future criminal involvement by providing services and support to the youth and to their families. Children are evaluated for needs, given referrals to our community partners, and progress is monitored through the court. It's a very, very hands-on court. I tend to get very involved with the children and their families, giving them the support they need, giving them the encouragement that they need, giving them a little more sterner treatment when they need that. But Juvenile Mental Health Court is really just a small part of our juvenile diversion efforts. I'd like to introduce our Trial Court Administrator, Gina Justice, who will give you much more detailed information.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. I'm going to talk a little bit about our Hillsborough County Juvenile Justice Partnership, as the Chief Judge already referred. We have a long history of collaboration here in Hillsborough County. We're here to make the best opportunities for our youthful offenders. Today, we'll talk a little bit more detailed about the recent history of our Juvenile Arrest Avoidance Program, which is known by the acronym JAAP or JAP. Our most recent JAP interagency agreement became revised in August 1 of 2017, just before the 2017 school year. The agreement formalizes the solicitation program for youthful first-time offenders, and it allows youth to avoid an arrest by the issuance by a law enforcement officer of a paper citation that refers the youth to the Administrative Office of the Court's Juvenile Diversion Program. Eligible offenses for our diversion program can be found in both the school and in our community. At that time, in 2017, we accomplished the reduction of ineligible offenses. We got that list down to 13 ineligible offenses, and we considered that a monumental accomplishment. But then, in 2019, we were able to reduce that list even further, where only five offenses for first-time youthful offenders are ineligible for a diversion. That's an incredible accomplishment. The data from 2017 to current indicates that children are consistently being referred to our Youthful Juvenile Defender Program in very high numbers. In 2017, we had 520 youth who avoided arrest and came to juvenile diversion. Then in 2018, it jumped up 35%, where we had 705 youth who avoided arrest and went to a juvenile diversion program. In 2019, which is not over yet, I project that we'll have about 625 youth who are diverted to juvenile diversion, which is a slight decrease from 2018, but it's still significantly higher than what we appreciated in 2017. We also receive a number of referrals to juvenile diversion post-arrest, when the State Attorney's Office refers first-time offenders who were arrested to juvenile diversion. Those are increased opportunities for us to provide resources to children and their families through diversion. Event both right, my juvenile diversion program manager is going to talk a little bit about the specific components of our juvenile diversion program. And I also wanted to offer that I did bring some materials in case you're interested in reading with more detail about the successes of our program and the requirements of participation, because I brought our interagency agreement, I brought our recent addendum in 2019, and I also brought the statistics of participants from October of 2019, in case you'd like to see something more granular.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to speak with you about the Juvenile Diversion Program. As Ms. Justice indicated, our program receives referrals from law enforcement officers throughout the county. That's Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Tampa Police Department, Plant City Police Department, Temple Terrace, alcohol, beverage, and tobacco, as well as the University of South Florida. We also receive referrals from the State Attorney's Office. Once those referrals come to us, we, the Juvenile Diversion Program, review the criminal report affidavit. Some of the things that we look for are the specifics of the law violation. We try to find out if there are any risk factors that jump out at us so that I can appropriately assign the case to the case managers. We have several case managers who have levels of expertise handling certain types of law violations. For example, we have a case manager that is well-versed in sexual offenses. We have those that are more inclined to work with youth that have mental health concerns. Once the criminal report affidavit is reviewed and the assignment is made to the appropriate court counselor, we immediately get in contact with the victim because we want to make sure that there's victim accountability. The things that we try to find out from the victim are things such as, "How are you impacted?" We want to find out if there's restitution. So we're looking for documentation so that we can assist them in getting repaid for any damages or losses that they may have suffered. We also try to find out if they want to come to the scheduled appointment so that they can actually be present when we meet with the youth and the parent. Afterwards, we reach out to the parent and coordinate a time that's convenient for them. We take into consideration that we have working parents, and so we have case managers that will be available before and sometimes even after hours. We don't want any barriers that would prevent young people access to our juvenile diversion program. Once the appointment takes place, there's two key components. The interview, where we speak with the young person and try to find out from their perspective what happened. We allow them to describe the event, and then there's an evidence-based risk assessment that's also conducted. We have two separate risk assessments, but both of them are looking for evidence of childhood trauma, evidence of adverse childhood experiences. Are there any concerns in terms of suicide risk factors, depressive symptoms, anxiety and trauma? We want to find out if the young person has any substance use concerns. How are they functioning overall? We want to make sure that we see how the client is doing and that their interaction with our program is meaningful, not simply to give a consequence for the crime, which is important, but also to... May I continue?
About, and you're, well, about how much more time do you have, just so that we know?
I can speed it up and finish in two minutes.
Okay, we'll give you another about five minutes, just...
Okay, I apologize for my delay.
No, you're fine, you're fine. Go ahead.
But the point that I was trying to make is that we want to make sure that when young people come into our office, it's a meaningful experience. Once the assessment and the interview is conducted, then what we try to figure out is what is the best way to sanction or to give consequences to the young person? Do we want to take care of that right there in the office, or is this case more appropriately set before team court? Some of the things that help us to determine where to best sanction a young person are, are there any social anxieties? Does the child have a history of cutting, any attempts at suicide? We don't want to put that type of individual in the presence of a jury of their peers because we don't want to re-traumatize or cause any triggers for the young person. Team court really is specifically for certain types of charges. So petty thefts, batteries, criminal mischief, disrupting school functions, those types of things. It's a really good experience for young people on both sides. The young people that are serving as jurors have the opportunity to build their skills and their competencies, and the young person that is sanctioned through team court has an opportunity to see that not all young people are glamorizing or glorifying antisocial behaviors. They see their peers doing positive things, and we hope that that has a positive impact on them. One of the things that I also would like to point out is that when we have young people and their parents in our office, what we try to do if they qualify for services, and services include therapeutic intervention, substance use, and even some youth development programs where they can develop their competencies. We try to capitalize on that moment and contact the service provider, triage the case, and see if we can go ahead and set up that next first appointment. We do that for a couple of reasons. We want to make sure that the connection is made and that the youth and parent, when they leave there, they don't have yet one more thing to do. And we do a soft pass-off of the youth and the parent to the treatment providers that we've got wonderful relationships with. We really, with the Juvenile Diversion Program, like to focus on youth competencies. I saw Ms. Beverly getting an award because of the good work that she does in the community. And we often refer clients to those types of resources in the community. We refer clients to the Rich House, which is supervised by law enforcement, but they do two tutorial programs and really spend quality time with the young people. And so, in a nutshell, what we try to make sure happens is that public safety, victim accountability, and the development of youth competencies is at the forefront of what we do with the diversion program. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else from the presentation? Okay. Councilman Goode, since you brought it up, and then Councilman Dingfelter, if you wish to comment, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended a meeting earlier in the year. I made a phone call because I was wondering, I was a program called Neighborhood Accountability Board, NAB, and it went away, and I was concerned about that, and I was, "Well, what are we doing?" Because that board had the stakeholders in the community really advocating for the victim and the young juvenile perpetrator, but it also gave accountability with the school, the community, and the child. And I went to the meeting and I found out about all the programs that the system was advocating for our young people and thought it would not be robbery if they not come and share that with us so we can be, we can know what is going on with our State Attorney and our Public Defender and our other outsourced agencies, so we can be knowledgeable, because people call us about everything. And to have information and say, "This is why this program is in place, this is who you need to call, this is the services that are provided." So I'm grateful that the Chief Judge came himself to talk about some of the programs, and we're glad to have you. So again, I just thank you for coming and bringing your staff with you.
Thank you very much. It's a situation we take very seriously. We're proud to be part of this community, and we want to give back and actually try to help the youth that we can.
Councilman Dingfelter.
Judge, there's not enough room for everybody at the podium, but I just wanted to run up. I know you're shy. 20 years ago, when I was in the Public Defender's Office, you know, I thought I knew what was going on in our community. But boy, you go to the, I would fill in periodically in the juvenile group in front of Judge Little, who did a great job. And you go in there and there's, at any given day, I can't remember the exact number, 50 or 100 kids in there, you know, in handcuffs. Some of them as young as, you know, what, eight years old, nine years old, that sort of thing, and they're in detention for 21, potentially 21 days. It's mind-blowing. People don't realize that, and that's why I'm saying it right now. But I'm so glad, and then that still happens to a certain extent for the kids in those five categories who, you know, might need a little bit more. But I'm so glad we've made progress on looking at this holistically. And I think one of the hardest parts of government is for government agencies to collaborate and work together. And you are such a leader in this community, bringing those groups together, you know, with positive ideas. Recently, you started the juvenile mental health thing, and you got to know that for so many of these kids and the stresses at home and the stresses of life and everything else, a lot of it is mental health, and you've realized that, and you sit there yourself personally to look over the juvenile mental health. That's my recollection. But I wanted to give a shout-out to you and to every department that's here represented, the law enforcement, obviously, State Attorney, Public Defender, the court system, DJJ, all the different agencies that are involved and working together to help those kids. And then the follow-up that Ms. Justice mentioned, or Ms. Justice and her partner mentioned, I think, is so critical, because we can get through those first six months or nine months and get them through that diversion program, but if we don't follow up and refer them to our rec. department, refer them to those other agencies, then we've sort of dropped the ball. So, I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
I think we concern ourselves with public safety, we concern ourselves with accountability for these youthful offenders, these juveniles, and if we can have them avoid an arrest, you know, it's hard to get a job now anywhere, and if you've got an arrest record, I mean, it's really, really difficult. So, believe me, I invite all the council members, anytime you'd like to come and spend a day at the courthouse with us, please let me know. I've got an extra robe we can throw on you. We can say we have a visiting judge, but please come and observe, come and observe our juvenile mental health court, our drug court, our veterans' treatment court. We're doing some really, really good things down there at the courthouse, and it is a team effort.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, I want to thank you. Councilman Dingfelter said more than a mouthful, and it was all accurate, but I want to thank you for intervening in a young person's life. One stupid mistake should not mean a lifetime of hardship as an adult, and I thank you and everybody that's working with you, Your Honor.
Thank you all very much.
And thank you very much for all that you do, obviously, being a longtime, like Councilman Dingfelter, attorney. I'm well-aware of a lot of the things that we do here in the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit, and we should all be very proud that our circuit, not just with things that happen in court, but our bar associations, that we really do good work here. We really have lawyers who not just do well, but do good to the community. I think that's really important to say, and, but I, and I wanted to thank everybody who came here today, including Travis, otherwise known as Teresa's husband. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, councilmember.
Yes, thank you. Before we go forward to the next item, I wanted to see, how many people are here for public comment? Could you raise your hand? Okay, you know what? Let's go ahead and take before, just so that in case if this item runs long, so that it doesn't bump up against ten thirty, let's go ahead and go to public comment really fast. And if you want to begin, sir, you may. Go ahead.
Mantisna, Tony Daniel. One of the things they need to straighten out is they need to, it's when you operate with a bureaucracy, you see there's a degree of inefficiency and insult that people have to experience from week after week. What you need to do is, say, public comment is a certain time. We don't need to sit here wondering if we're going to speak, if we're not going to speak. It's disrespectful, and it's dishonorable to private citizens who take their time to come down here, and you don't know if you're going to be speaking at one o'clock or at ten o'clock. Just make it ten o'clock and call it a day, and schedule other people to be here at a certain time. And if anybody want to listen to whatsoever they have to say, they can stay and do so. That's a simple solution. Why should private citizens, why should the citizenry, who elected you guys, want to come down here and voice their opinions, have to wait like puppets on a string? That's unfair. Really need to restore my time if possible, but you guys really need to get that straight. It's a degree of incompetence. If that can't be straightened out, the city is hustling backwards, and that's not unusual because society is hustling backwards. As stated previously, need to make donations and all appropriations to Lori Park Zoo because that's where every African's going to be, the Africans that's left in this city, that's where we're going to be, with the apes, the monkeys, the lions, the tigers, and everything else, because we're still not considered as citizens. We're still not considered as human beings, and look around you, and you can see it. Go around our communities, and you can see it. Go around our neighborhoods, and you can see it. Visit Orient Road Jail or Falkenburg Road Jail, and you can see it. It can be seen. It's a certain kind of hatred for African people, and that hatred is deep. It's six hundred years deep, and we experience it, we feel it, and we live it. And week after week, when I'm here, or when you see any African person out there, if it's Marcus Garvey, Malcolm X, Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, Fannie Lou Hamer, Harriet Tubman, whosoever it may be, we're not begging anyone to like us. We're not begging anyone to respect us, and this message isn't for you guys. This message is for the other guys. We have to organize. We have to organize and demand respect, demand equal treatment, demand fair housing, demand justice. All these things we have to do as African people, instead of coming down here, week after week, a bunch of MFing beggars, begging, begging, week after week. We came from too proud of ancestry to come down here begging, week after week.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please.
My name is Pastor Frank Williams. Coming down here constantly, just like the brothers just while I was going to say, we get no justice regardless. Y'all basically worried about everything else. I think y'all care more about a damn dog than you care about black people, the way you treat them. And I was reading the Constitution the other night, and I found out the Constitution, the amendment to the Constitution, wasn't read up for black folk. Wasn't read up for black folks at all. We were slavery. Our ancestors were slavery during that time, and the only thing slavery that got was to work and be killed. And it's sad, and you're still treating us the same way. They're treating us worse than they treat a damn dog, and that's not right. And we got black people that think they somebody that won't come down here because they think they better than everybody else. We have to understand, and I try to tell y'all over and over and over, again and again, I'm a preacher. I'm not an atheist, and atheists come against me real hard, but it don't bother me. I got to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ regardless of where I am, and I thank God for them towels, too. And preachers need to come out here big time and stand up for themselves and stand up for their people's self. No, they hiding behind the podium and sitting in the air conditioner, collecting money. That's all they doing. But they need to come down here and pack this place up, let y'all know that we mean business. I ain't got to beg y'all for nothing. I beg my heavenly Father for everything. And one of these days, y'all going to see justice, y'all going to see and respect me and this young man here, because we trying to stand up for justice, not just for black folk, but black folks are the one that suffering the consequences. White folks getting away with murder. Let me tell you something a little bit about history before you ring that bell on there. Back during history times, you know what? They slaughtered little boys, fed them to the alligator, two years a month, and you know about it, and you ain't too far from that now. Lord have mercy, why don't y'all treat us some, and then you ain't going to ask us no question, but everybody else come up there, you going to ask them questions? Wait a minute, come back. Tell me to come back, and I can answer all your questions. God knows I need to answer your questions. We standing in jeopardy right now, and I got this church over there on Scott Street, and they treating me like a damn dog, and it's not right. Talk about me. And now we got a male here, Lord have mercy, say, she's a woman, a man's body. Where all that crap come from? Jesus Christ, we need help. Thank you for letting me speak my piece. I got a lot of other things to say, but y'all ain't going to give me the time to say. God bless all of y'all.
Next, please.
Act like a human being. Come on, man.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Berlin. I was here last week or last month talking about the poor, at least the poor black people, the one that's so poor we can't afford the OOR, I can only afford the letter P. And it come consistently with this affordable housing. Now, the government said that they'll provide me a safe, secure, and safe housing and dignity. I staying here two months, somebody lying. I don't know if it's the government or the city of Tampa or housing or, I don't know. I'm not sure who is to blame for this, but I asked you to come out to my apartment. I live at one hundred and thirty-first Street, nineteen fifteen, East one hundred and thirty-first Street, Tampa, Florida. Volunteers of America, HUD Housing, Federal Housing, I don't know who is responsible for all of this, but this gentleman is smoking dope. It comes through the ventilation, pipe corrosion, drug-infested. Am I being rejected, or are my other people being rejected because we so poor we can't afford affordable housing? We can't have a decent place to stay? I don't smoke dope. I'm tired of smoking it. Double ear infection, respiratory infection. I'm smelling this every day. He started at seven thirty last night. He quit about ten twenty this morning. It's fifty-five degrees outside. I'm sitting outside dressed like this with a blanket for two and a half hours because I'm looking for fresh air. Again, who is responsible for me having an adequate, safe, secure, with dignity place to stay? City Council, County Commission, HUD Housing, Affordable Housing, Hillsborough County, Tampa? Who? I'm going to keep coming down here because I keep getting sick. I'm keep getting sick. I'm taking antibiotics. I'm not the only one going through this. Them other poor black people, they going through it also. They don't come down here and talk, so I'm that other voice for them. Somebody has to know that this is going on. I've been coming down here for quite some time, and I've been speaking about this same issue, and guess what they do? Nothing. Somebody's listening, thank you. Somebody's listening, somebody is talking, but nobody is doing anything. I've been living there since March of 2019. I've been to the ER. I've had respiratory infections. I've never dealt with any of this until I came to Tampa, Florida, and I'm so poor that I cannot have a decent place, secure place, no drug-infested, pipe corrosion, in my air-breathing space. Thank you very much, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Marvin Wright. I'm coming to speak about roundabouts on the Thirty-Fourth Street area. Pretty much, I found that the roundabouts are not desired by the country or the public as a whole. Generally, roundabouts increase the number of incidents by approximately up to thirty percent in those areas where roundabouts exist. The increased number of incidents would increase auto insurance rates for people living in that general area as far as East Tampa. The roundabouts are not set up for a large vehicular travel. There's actually a fire station on Thirty-Fourth Street, which that would inhibit or force them to choose a different path in order to exit, I guess, their fire station area. I also observed myself that pedestrians generally attempt to avoid crossing roundabout Let's see. Also, as far as how to address roundabouts, it's still an uncertainty for engineers installing the roundabouts and the public as a general as far as how they can actually travel through those roundabout locations. The travel through the Thirty-Fourth Roundabout area, I guess people traveling through those areas still would be required to travel through intersections with traffic lights, so the number of roundabouts is, in comparison to the intersections with traffic lights, would be very minimal. So, that's not even a, I guess, a relatively increase as far as safety goes. Let's see, there's already been, I guess, four-way stop signs set up on Thirty-Fourth Street to reduce the travel speeds of vehicles traveling through those areas, and the four-way stop signs is exponentially more feasible than implementing roundabouts. The funds would be better spent to improve the roads and also to improve the sidewalks in the East Tampa area, and public safety should be the first concern as opposed to trying to implement roundabouts, which are not desired.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Next, please. And I want to make sure, next to this gentleman over here in the red shirt, anybody else here for public comment? Raise your hand if so. Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning. Geraldine Rogers Toomes. My purpose is to continue expressing concerns about your plan to install roundabouts on Thirty-Fourth Street in East Tampa out of concern for the resident's safety. Roundabouts would be installed in areas with a high concentration of children, when roundabouts are known to have a high incidence of traffic accidents. This is new data that you all shouldn't be researching. The Word of God states, we should walk circumspectly, evaluate the entire situation. I surmise that this has not happened. I feel that roundabouts on Thirty-Fourth Street fail to take into consideration the endangerment of children, pedestrians, and bicyclists. You're, imagine 2040 comprehensive plan states, when there is a question about roads being pedestrian-friendly, the Hillsborough MPO Advisory Board should be consulted. Has that happened? You all need to answer that question. In my opinion, the Transportation Department staff failed to comply with the City of Tampa's 2040 comprehensive plan, according to Ms. Duncan's presentation on the Thirty-Fourth Street project. There was no mention of whether, in her presentation at the last meeting, there was no mention of whether public hearings were held or the dates the public hearings were scheduled. Meetings with community groups is no substitution for a public hearing. No coordination with the MPO Advisory Board, that's, you need to remember that. That's policy number MBY, policy four-one, four-point-one-point-three, which ensures bicycle and pedestrian-friendly roads. Potential conflicts between pedestrian and motor vehicle should be minimized according to policy LU four-point-three-point-two and NE policy five-point-one-point-one. The Tampa City Council November twenty-first, 2019, meeting transcript failed to identify what the City Council approved regarding the Thirty-Fourth Street Roundabout Project. This information is needed to file an appeal. Perhaps roundabouts don't go far enough to promote pedestrian safety. Leah Reed was struck and killed by a car while crossing the road at Forty-First Street near Roundabout Location in May of 2018. I know all of you remember that. The neighbors said that they afraid to cross the street at River Pines Apartments. The public should be concerned about the City of Tampa's Transportation Department decisions in reference to roundabouts. Recent research reflects the thirty percent increase in roundabouts in those areas. I spoke with Mr. McKinney with the Florida Department of Transportation, an engineer who concurred that I have a legitimate pedestrian concern about the safety of children. Mr. McKinney stated that you all need to listen, and the other point I may need to make, and it's only going to take a second.
We'll give you thirty seconds, ma'am.
The City of Tampa elected officials and administrators ought to be concerned about citizen's safety, too. You wouldn't want the city to be sued for culpable negligence. Our lives do matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Jim DiMauro from the residences at Franklin Street, and I'm here to comment on the brick removal, which is scheduled for ten thirty, and I don't know if I'm supposed to speak now or yet.
I think at ten thirty.
Ten thirty?
Yeah, and actually, yeah, that is actually being rescheduled. That's what I, Mr. Shelby, what number is that?
Forty-seven, I believe. It's a ten-thirty public hearing.
Yeah, so what?
Forty-seven, number forty-seven.
Yeah, so what you would have to do is wait until it's actually being rescheduled?
Although, sir, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that is being, there's going to be a request from the administration to have that taken up along with related items, and that's going to be continued on a request of the administration to February sixth of next year, 2020. So, it'll come back, so it's not going to be handled today, and comments can be taken on the, a lot. Um, and comments can be taken on the uh, along with whatever the related cases are on February sixth.
All right, I just, I thank you for this opportunity, and I just want to point out that there are several people here from the residences, from the area, who would have also been in support of not removing those bricks.
Thank you, sir. Happy holidays. We appreciate it. Okay, uh, now with ending of public comment, we move forward. Oh, yes, sir.
Just, just a quick, a quick thing on the roundabouts. Um, you know, that this has been discussed over and over, and I just wanted to mention something for everybody's benefit. Um, the Ins- Insurance Institute for Highway Safety and the Federal Highway Administration have statistics. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm just reading their statistics. It says roundabouts have a thirty-seven percent reduction in overall collisions, a seventy-five percent reduction in injury collisions, a ninety percent reduction in fatality collisions. This is all across the whole country. A forty percent reduction in pedestrian collisions. Uh, it says some of the benefits include lower travel speeds, no light to beat, and one-way travel around the circle. So anyway, um, we're not doing this willy-nilly. Um, our department, uh, traffic departments put a lot of time and effort into this, and it's also, I believe, proven nationally that this is a safety, a bet- a safer way to do it. I know change is not easy, but this is a change for the better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we move onward to item fifty-two for um, FDOT is uh, FDOT here, I saw. Oh, there you go. Ma'am.
I'd like to say so.
Oh, and and Pastor, I'm sorry, sir, not recognized. Sir, I'm sorry, sir.
They called it a roundabout.
Sir, I'm sorry, you're not recognized. We're moving on to item fifty-two. Um, if FDOT wishes to come forward. Go ahead. And I, and I want to say, too, before FDOT begins why I brought this item forward, we have here and we'll be hearing from him in a little bit, Mr. Mel Loan from Mel's Hot Dogs, who's here. Um, we had an incident at uh, Mel's Hot Dogs, as everybody knows, a couple of weeks ago, where a vehicle literally crashed into the restaurant. And um, thank God, according to the best of my knowledge, nobody in the restaurant, I believe, was hurt, and that's a very good thing. Um, you know, I I never miss an opportunity to try to talk about Bush Boulevard and just how important of a corridor that is, as you know, obviously, ma'am, um, to the city of Tampa. It's a potentially a corridor to a tourist destination here in Tampa. It's potentially a corridor to uh, such a a vibrant and growing area when you include especially Fowler, USF, et cetera. But right now, it's essentially a corridor of neglect, uh, as as far as I'm concerned. Some of the things that I've been looking at, and I know that obviously FDOT's doing the corridor study now, which I'm sure you're going to be talking about, um, but is uh, taking a look at design for a lower speed limit, making Bush Boulevard more of a walkable community in terms of uh, folks being able to get around, et cetera, in a place that really, really values the 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 welfare and safety, et cetera, of pedestrians, which is something that's very, very important, obviously. So we look forward to hearing from you, ma'am, and and we'll uh, talk afterwards. So we appreciate it. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Um, thank you, uh, Board of Council members. Uh, my name is Edith Huang. I am here on behalf of FDOT to talk about safety on Bush Boulevard.
And if you could, ma'am, please, a little bit louder, if you don't mind. Thank you, ma'am.
Um, so, um, Bush Boulevard uh, in the city of Tampa spans from the west on Armenia Avenue all the way to Fifty-Sixth Street. And then looking at it from an engineering standpoint, um, it it serves as a functional arterial, and um, it is, it spans a region from the suburban to urban. So what really that tells us is that we have a portion, a large portion of commuter traffic, and then we also have a presence of bicycles and pedestrians. And what FDOT looks at is, we approach safety from a multifaceted approach, which is taking education, engineering, and enforcement. So from an educational standpoint, we've been working with BikeWalk Tampa Bay to uh, basically twofold to uh, survey drivers of their percep- perception of driving Bush Boulevard, as well as uh, doing on-street education to um, let them know the safe use of the roadway. Um, we've also partnered with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. Uh, basically, it's a high visibility enforcement grant, which, which uh, even though they're there to enforce the speed, their primary purpose really is to get to interface with road users, uh, maybe provide bike lights reflective material to um, encourage them to use the road more safely. Now, uh, speaking of engineering, uh, we do have short-term, midterm, and long-term projects. In the short term, we really focus on uh, West Bush Boulevard, which is west of the interstate, and East Bush Boulevard, which is east of the interstate, as uh, separate projects. Um, now for West Bush Boulevard, there was a recent resurfacing. Um, we are very happy that we were able to add uh, several median islands and traffic separators. Essentially reduces the range where the driver has to pay attention to when driving, and then it also provides a refuge for pedestrians if, in fact, they want to cross the street. Now, uh, we have um, several smaller projects, more spot or corridor-wide, and then I I have listed the most notable. Um, the first one is, we we've worked with the intersection of North Boulevard, where we had uh, schoolchildren crossing before and after school.
Ma'am, I'm so sorry. If I can interrupt you for one second, is there a PowerPoint with this, or is it? Okay, I don't know if it was supposed to. Okay, I didn't know. And and Brandon, do we have a microphone? If if we may, a microphone?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because we we can't hear up here, unfortunately.
Okay.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Picking up, so I have listed a couple of the uh, hot, uh, the, a couple of the spot corridor enhancements. Uh, most notable is we've been working on placing speed feedback signs along the corridor. Essentially, essentially, this reminds drivers of the speed. Reminds drivers of the speed and gives them a feedback, hey, you know, you're driving a little bit too fast, maybe you want to go down to the speed limit. Um, we've also been partnering with the city of Tampa um, to in incorporate lighting improvements at intersections and also on the corridor. Now, to monitor the speed, we have several uh, ways in which we're collecting data from the speed feedback signs, as well as from Bluetooth devices. And we've been uh, using this data to look at how we can further um, work, how we can further uh, take actions in the future. Now, I'm I'm gonna move on to midterm actions. Um, so that that, what I was talking about was the West Bush Boulevard. Now for East Bush Boulevard, uh, we have a project coming spring of twenty twenty. Uh, we're very excited to have uh, four hawks at the locations, at these, as the locations listed. Um, we had a similar project on Hillsborough Avenue, where we've seen, where we have been able to see a reduction in speed, as well as a reduction in the crashes. And based on that, uh, we have, we are looking forward to a speed reduction of five miles an hour and a reduction of crashes, of thirteen crashes a year. Now, for West Bush Boulevard coming in twenty twenty-five, we anticipate a project to implement speed management uh, strategies. Most notable are reduction in the lane width, uh, adding a median where the current two-way left turn lane is, and also filling in gaps in the sidewalk. Now, looking farther out for the East Bush Boulevard, to do a similar approach, we're hoping to kick off a study, a speed management study, to uh, evaluate the corridor on East Bush Boulevard and see what we can in incorporate as we have for with the western portion. So that's a brief summary of uh, what FDOT is working on for uh, safety and speed management. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And and before Councilman Gudes, I I just wanted to uh, thank you guys for your work, but I also, uh, Mr. Mr. Loewen, did you want to come up and say anything, sir? We have here uh, Mel Loewen from Mel's Hot Dogs, who's here, whose uh, business was impacted by this crash, and Mel will give you, what do you think you need? Four minutes, five minutes, three minutes?
Thank you, Councilman Viera. I appreciate.
And if you could state your name.
Oh, my name, important questions. My name is Mel Loewen. My uh, wonderful bride, Virginia, and I own Mel's Hot Dogs. And uh, we're concerned, and I appreciate immensely your bringing this to the forefront. We've been in business for forty-seven years. We've watched Bush Boulevard become an intensely dangerous street. I don't remember issues like this in the past, but it's becoming common and frequent. I I had the opportunity to speak with the gentleman from the Florida DOT and explain to me that the average speed on Bush Boulevard is fifty-two miles an hour. The average speed is fifty-two miles an hour. I believe Councilman Viera and I were sitting in a store one time, and we watched somebody go by, I don't know, somewhere seventy or eighty miles an hour. It's just not uncommon. We've got this jewel in Tampa. Bush Gardens, which the people in Bush Gardens were intelligent enough to locate next to my restaurant. And uh, we have a street that passes in front of it that's killing people. Go to Tampa, go to Bush Boulevard, get hit by a car. It's great press. The logic behind not lowering the speed limit, which is very low on Temple Terrace, by the way, when you cross Fifty-Sixth Street, it goes from forty-five to thirty. The logic behind it is, well, we do studies. The engineer told, we do studies. Stop studying. Change the speed limit. Make the streets safe. Do what's ever necessary. Save lives. Phew, it's very logical. Appreciate your time. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Loewen. I appreciate it. Councilman Gudes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your leadership on this issue. As you know, we both share.
Yep.
Bush Boulevard. So my concern is, uh, Ms. Ping?
Yes, Peter, yes.
What what I'm, what I'm confused about with the information that you've uh, laid out, uh, when we talk about East Bush Boulevard, which I've worked at as a law enforcement officer uh, in my time, I I I'm confused about the the numbers, uh, where you go with citations, speeding warrants, because I I don't recall the sheriff office ever patrolling Bush Boulevard. And you have listed here AC SO, which deals with what kind of sheriff office, because on Bush Boulevard from Armenia, there's, so on the subway, there's a little marker in the line that has from the city of Tampa. And we go all the way to about, I my recollection would be about fifty-first or fifty-second, will start Temple Terrace to Fifty-Sixth. So I don't know where the, these numbers are coming from as it relates to the sheriff's office in the county or in Temple Terrace.
I I can answer the question. Speed management is a hot topic in Florida DOT. I think most uh, all the councilmen, you work with our secretary, Graham. He really paid this attention to your request. He allocated a hundred thousand dollar district fund to work with sheriff office and TBD to enforce, do the speed enforcement for three corridor, Bush Boulevard, Fowler Avenue, and Hillsborough Avenue. And later, when we work with sheriff office and TBD, they say both agencies have inter-agency agreement. TBD can help sheriff office, sheriff office can help TBD, too. So the first phase, you see the statistic, is the one just ended by sheriff office. They address uh, Bush Boulevard. TBD, right now, is just starting the same program. So we spread the money to have a six-month campaign during the Bush Boulevard, Fowler Avenue, and Hillsborough Avenue, doing the speed management. Try to tell the driver, you need to slow down. This is the short-term action we are doing.
I I I mean, I I I hear what you're saying, but for me, uh, being a longtime law enforcement officer, knowing those streets that you're naming, I I don't recall ever the sheriff office giving these many citations within the city limits or in Temple Terrace. So unless this grant was given to the police department to do this particular study, then okay. But if you're saying AC SO statistic data from five-eight to five-eight nineteen to nine-seventy with the sheriff office numbers? I I would like to really see the sheriff numbers seeing it, because I I don't see that number of of deputies giving tickets on Hillsborough Avenue and that stretch within the city limits or Bush Boulevard. I don't see that happening. So to me, I don't think these numbers are are accurate unless that grant was given to specifically the police department of TBD or the Temple Terrace Police Department. So for me, I I would need more accurate data, because I don't think this data is correct, sir.
We can provide the data. I I monitor those uh, statistics weekly. I even know the time they went out to do the enforcement.
Again, unless that grant for specific, and the, and the, the grant state, the sheriff office will go out there and set up a a a speed trap or set up uh, some type of monitoring, I could go along with that. But if you're just saying, as an average day or throughout the month, these months, that the sheriff office is out there giving speeding tickets on Hillsborough Avenue, I mean, on Bush Boulevard, Fowler Avenue like that, I I I'm just, so with my experience, I just don't see that. I unless, unless I can see some actual copy with some deputy's names on tickets, I I I just don't see that.
We can provide the info. Easy, yes.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carlson.
Partly a DOT point, but maybe a systemic issue. Yesterday, I met with some neighborhood leaders, and uh, speeding is a systemic issue throughout the city, apparently. And uh, you know, I've seen it myself, I'm sure you all have seen it, but I'm getting lots of complaints for about people racing through uh, school zones, racing through neighborhoods. And on, I drive Bush Boulevard every day, and, I mean, not Bush uh, uh, Bay Shore every day. And every day on Bay Shore, I have at least one person passing me going sixty-five or seventy miles an hour. And so we have um, we have a systemic issue we need to figure out how to address. And maybe uh, in a separate conversation, we could try to get Chief of Staff, since he was head of the deputy, head of the police force. But we need to figure out, part of it is design, and uh, and and in addition, the landscaping and everything, part of it is uh, is maybe enforcement. But we've got to figure out a solution to this. There, I, it'd be interesting to see the data going backwards to see if this is becoming more and more of an issue. It seems that people are angrier and in more of a hurry. Um, and then the opposite part of that is people, despite the new rule, they're still on their cell phones. Uh, they're on their cell phones and speeding, or they're stopped at stoplights and not moving, so people get angry, and then they speed around them. There's all kinds of dangerous things happening, and we've got to figure out uh, how to resolve that. So that's one idea. The other one is that, you know, I've said many times, I think uh, Bush Boulevard is our gateway to the world. Um, we think that uh, that downtown is our front door. It's actually Bush Boulevard. Um, a lot of people uh, come into this area through Tampa Airport, thankfully, uh, but Orlando has seventy million tourists a year, and a lot of them come over to Bush Gardens, and when they uh, see Bush Boulevard um, or Fowler Avenue, they, that's their impression of Tampa. And as I've met lots of CEOs traveling around the world, uh, that's what they remember about Tampa. And so my question, I know, Councilman Viera, you were working with the mayor on a beautification project. Is that happening at, parallel to this, or is that?
You know, I I was actually going to speak about that, uh, Councilman Carlson, which is that one of the reasons I brought this forward is because um, now with the discussions we're having, we're going to be taking a look at an MOU for the uh, USF area, I think it is on the nineteenth. Um, there's discussions on uh, Bush Boulevard potentially be included within that vision, which is a really, really good thing. But I see discussions like this as part and parcel of what we're doing with, whatever you want to call it, a taxing district, whatever you want to call it, uh, for the USF area and for the whole corridor, which is talking about not only economic development in the area, but also quality of life enhancements, which this is certainly with this is about a hundred and ten percent. So to answer your question, yeah, of course, that's something that's part and parcel of this, which is why this was being brought forward. We can't take a look at economic development in the north Tampa USF Bush Boulevard area without taking a look at basic quality of life issues, such as speeding, such as the 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 safety of of pedestrians, of bicyclists, of folks in their cars, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that they all go part and parcel of it. Um, uh, economic development without taking into account the human capital of the people that live in in communities, particularly disadvantaged communities in areas that are filled with working families, et cetera, I think is incomplete. So that's why we're having this discussion here today. So yeah, of course, there, those two are married, and they're not getting a divorce. So, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of the things I really, really, really wanted just to pound upon today is to continue to work to lower that speed limit on Bush Boulevard. I know that uh, there's the corridor study that I, and and I apologize, you may have said this, when will the corridor study be finished or completed?
That's the ones uh, under the planning. They are looking at. Uh, they are working with a a lot of partner to settle down a smaller issue. So hopefully, it's uh, sometime next year.
Okay, yeah, and and I would echo what my friend and constituent, uh, Mr. Mel Loewen said, which is that, you know, design, I mean, you know, when when everyday folks take a look at explanations as, we need more design, design, design. You know, everyday people go, hey, listen, people are dying. You literally had a a a vehicle plow through one of our well, most well-known restaurants here in the city of Tampa, North Tampa, Mel's Hot Dogs. So I think people want action right here, right now. We've seen statistics, I mean, I got them right here. Then in the three-mile stretch along Bush Boulevard from Nebraska to Fifty-First Street, there were two-hundred-and-fifty-two crashes in sixteen, two-hundred-and-sixty-two in two thousand seventeen, two-hundred-and-eight, in the two thousand eighteen, a hundred-and-ninety-one crashes. You know, that's no good. So that's year after year of catastrophe. So that's year after year of catastrophic injuries and significant damages that are being held across Bush Boulevard. So I think my message to y'all is to please, let's get vigorously moving with action right here, right now, to protect the lives and the welfare of people off Bush Boulevard.
Thank you. We heard the message.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, for Mr. Ping goes, so my colleagues in the public understand what I was referring to. If they could put up the frame that has the short-term action, the zero to two years, that shows the high visibility enforcement and management? Do you have it on screen there?
Oh, the slide? Yes.
No, not that one. Short-term actions, zero to two. Short-term actions, zero to two years. Nope, go again. There it is, right there. That's what I was referring to.
Yes.
Those numbers. So, and that's what I want to challenge with those numbers, but just being a longtime law enforcement person, knowing Bush Boulevard, working that, and when you indicate the sheriff's office there, that's why I was questioning those numbers. So if you could go back and give me an update on that, because.
No problem.
Maybe that study was given to us if it was a grant versus the sheriff, because I don't recall ever seeing the sheriff out there just doing law enforcement duties on Bush Boulevard like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And I wanted to, again, thank my colleagues for your support of Bush and Fowler in that corridor. I know that everybody here is very passionate about it. It's one of the most ignored, sidelined areas in the city, and I really do believe that with just modest investments, you can have robust movements forward for that area. So I wanted to thank everybody for your enthusiastic support. Okay, next, are there any requests by the public reconsideration of legislative matters? Being none, we move forward to item number four, which is being moved. Did we already move item number four? No. Okay. May I have a motion to that effect? We have a motion by Councilman Nascaco, a second by Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, item number five. Anyone here for item number five?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Jan McLean, the Office of the City Attorney. I'm here for the first reading of proposed revisions to various sections in Chapter Twenty-Six. And this is the first reading. If you'd like me to answer any questions or do any explanations, I'd be glad to do that.
Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder.
Thanks, Jan. Not specifically on this, but as related to the water department. It came to my attention that, you know, we have water restrictions, and we have enforcement, you know, when people are watering on the wrong days or what have you. And it came to my attention from a constituent that we don't give warnings, that whatever group we hired to do that enforcement, which I think is a private group, that we delegate that to, we, and I kind of, I think I mentioned this to Brad as well, but we just give a ticket right away. And if that's true, I think it's a little unfair, because a lot of people, I can probably ask the fifty people who are sitting out there, you know, what day of the week they're supposed to water and how, oh, there's Brad, and how many, you know, you know, the details of water restrictions. And when we're not in a severe drought, those issues kind of go away a little bit. But anyway, so I love Brad, but I just want to throw it out to both of you to look at that and maybe come back in two or three months and talk to us about it as a staff report. You got a date for me, Marty, February or something?
Chairman, do you want to take a motion now for that?
You know, I'll do an exception.
As long as I'm in the middle.
It's December, why not?
Yeah, ho, ho.
If I can, did you want it, you say, what, when did you, how much time, February? February, a staff report, February twentieth?
That'd be great. But just briefly, to take a look at that issue, the possibility of warnings instead of like boom, because it's a hundred and something dollar ticket for the first-time offender. And even police, you know, if you're, you know, police give you a little warning sometime. So anyway.
I'm sorry, if you could put that in the form of the motion for the clerk and put it on the floor for a second and a vote?
Sure. So that'd be a motion for the water department to look into the possibility of adding a warning to our enforcement program on water restrictions.
And that's February twentieth, twenty-twenty, just that.
Correct, thank you. Anyway, I brought it up during this item, because this is a change to our code and our water code, and that's just made me think of it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second, was it? Carlson? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now I need a motion on the item.
Yep, okay. Who would like to read item number five?
I'll be glad to read it.
Go ahead, sir.
Sure. An ordinance being considered for first reading, an ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida, relating to utilities, water commitment, connection, or service, making revisions to the city of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twenty-Six, Utilities, Article Two, Water, Article Three, and wastewater. Amending Section Twenty-Six dash seventy-four, application for water commitment, connection, or service, execution of service commitment, considered contract between customer and city. Amending Section Twenty-Six dash seventy-six, separate connection required. Amending Section Twenty-Six dash ninety-four, private fire protection systems generally. Amending Section Twenty-Six dash ninety-six, requirements for fire hydrants. Creating Section Twenty-Six dash one hundred, water facility ownership. Amending Section Twenty-Six dash one hundred through and including Twenty-Six dash one-one-five, reserved. Amending Section Twenty-Six dash one-twenty-four, extensions or improvements provided by applicant. Repealing ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for effective date, and I'm done reading for today.
I was going to say, man, God bless you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, or a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chair, second reading adoption will be held on January ninth, twenty-twenty, at nine-thirty a.m.
Okay. Item number six, Councilman Gudes, can you read item number six, sir? Unless if anybody has any questions on it.
Item number six filed, V H C nineteen dash twenty-two, it's.
For first reconsideration, ordinance, amending ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash one-forty, ordained by the city of Tampa, City Council of the city of Tampa on October seventeen, twenty-nineteen, to correct severance error, providing severability, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, second by Councilman Nascaco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, second reading adopted on January ninth, twenty-twenty, at nine-thirty a.m.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now we're going to go to polled items and staff reports, but before I want to rush through, or run through, I should say, just the committees and of course omit the items that have been pulled, which I'll go through. Councilman Citro, Public Safety.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move items number seven and eight.
Motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Gudes, item number nine.
Item number nine.
Do we have a second? We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, second by Councilman Nascaco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, sure, item ten through eighteen, if you could omit twelve.
I will move items ten through eighteen, omitting item twelve.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Nascaco. Oh. Yes, sixteen.
Correct.
Motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Nascaco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilman Miranda, nineteen through twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move item nineteen to twenty-two.
Motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Nascaco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have Councilman Carlson, if you could omit items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-two. So, good luck.
Thank you. I'd like to move items number twenty-three through thirty-five, minus number, excluding items number twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty, and thirty-two.
Second. Motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Nascaco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that correct for those?
With substitutes.
Right. And then. All the substitutes are otherwise are being held. Councilman Nascaco?
Before I move this, on number thirty-six, this is, I mean, it's already been approved, so this is just a Scrivener error, so there's really nothing to do regarding this vitrified brick street to be removed.
Which one is it?
Number thirty, I mean, it's just a correction, it's already been voted on, so, all right, I move items thirty-six through thirty-nine.
Before Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, and I will vote in favor of all these. I just wanted to, and I had a little chat with Gene Duncan yesterday, this speaks to some improvements on West Shore, item thirty-eight, and the specific area is kind of north of Kennedy in the West Shore District. What I asked Ms. Duncan was, I said, we have some huge, long-term problems on West Shore from Kennedy to Gandy, and then even now, south of Gandy. We had a zoning I won't go into, but the issue came up, all the construction south of Gandy. And I asked Ms. Duncan, I said, what are we doing to improve West Shore, other than the West Shore slash Gandy intersection, which is being improved? But other than that, we've got a long stretch of West Shore that I think has basically been ignored for a long time. So you will hear more on that as we move forward, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we're going to move to polled items. We'll go through twelve, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-two, and then we move to forty-eight under staff reports, so. And Councilman Carlson, if you wish.
Yeah, I just had two quick questions I wanted to get on the record, and I talked to Mr. Baird earlier, so thank you for coming. Number one is, I just wanted to make sure in looking at this, that it's not part of the Toilet Detach Project. You said earlier that it's part of another project. Could you just say that for the record?
Correct. Brad Baird, Public Works Administrator. This is an amendment to Corolla Agreement with the master plan that we have performed earlier for pipes. And this would add Task Three, which is an engineering report associated with the bond, a future bond issue. So it is not associated with the Tampa Augmentation Project.
Thank you. And second question, real fast. In the scope of work, item number one, it is assumptions and city responsibilities, it says the engineer assumes that the data and information supplied by the city without the independent review or evaluation is accurate. Is there someone else who does an audit of the, this is, as I understand it, about demand performance and water supply? Is there somebody else who does an outside audit of that to verify the city's numbers, since what they're saying is they're going to report back your numbers, right?
We have audits performed on a regular basis, you know, with, obviously with our Revenue and Finance Department, both externally and internally. However, that language you just read is pretty, is standard language for an engineering report, that they would rely on the information that we provide to them, so.
And I assume in their report, when they come back, they'll put that disclosure in there again, right?
Yeah, so it'll, yes, sir. It'll be included in that bond issue.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Who'd like to move item twelve?
Shall I move?
A motion from Councilman Miranda, with a second from Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item up, I believe, is Councilman Dingfelder, item number twenty-four, correct?
I think it was all those.
Well, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four through twenty-seven, thirty, and thirty-two, which all relate to what I thought looked like some really good affordable housing opportunities that the city's been participating in. So I asked staff if they would come, give us a little more information, and here they are on those, what I hope are very positive, you know, positive things in terms of trying to meet our affordable housing needs.
Vanessa McCleary, Housing and Community Development Manager for the city of Tampa. So the request today was for more information about the West River project?
Well, just for those of us who just returned to council or are new to council, you know, we're not that familiar with these projects. I know these projects have been going on for probably more than a year.
Yes.
But just to tell us a little bit more about what's going on, I think there's two different projects there. The city's participating, the housing authority is in the house today, and I know they're part of this as well, but anyway, just a little update on what's going on there.
Okay. So I can give you an update, but Leroy Moore is here from the housing authority. This is the West River project, which was part of the envisioned plan. And so we have been working on this for several years. The city has provided now about four million dollars to the project, and it's getting ready to start coming online. So Leroy and Brett are here, and they can tell you the status of where the projects are, but if you're driving on two-seventy-five, you can see that we're starting to go vertical.
Awesome.
Thank you, Vanessa, and good morning, council. I have Brett Green with Related with me. I'm Leroy Moore, Tampa Housing Authority, and just want to give you a view of the overall West River site. There it is highlighted in colors there are the subject of the development activity that we have in partnership with Related, as well as Bank of America CDC. I'm going to ask Brett to actually walk you through each of the four developments that are funded partially with some city dollars, along with a mix of other dollars from throughout the state, as far away as, you know, the Federal Home Loan Bank, a variety of funding that we've amassed to actually be able to, as of today, have six buildings already funded. We're actually north of nine-hundred units funded already on this site. Two buildings, as you can visibly see, are under construction, and that is, what's denoted here, is T-one, the Renaissance at West River, which is the image that was up when Vanessa was speaking, and also T-two-A, which is the existing eight-story Mary Bethon High Rise that's under substantial renovation. That's our first partnership with Related. The other four deals are denoted as this T-three project, and I'm going to have Brett just sort of walk you through each of those projects, some of which are seeking subordination agreements because of the Rad, the Real Assistance Demonstration, funding that we have from HUD has to be in priority position, and some of which are seeking funding as little as seventy-five thousand, as high as a million dollars in supportive funding from the city of Tampa.
Mr. Moore, before you do, looking at these various buildings, red, orange, purple, et cetera, what's your affordable, what's your attainable, what's your, you know, what's your market rate, or can you give us a little more on that?
Absolutely.
Before you pass the baton?
Yes, the T-one building is a hundred-and-sixty-unit new construction project, the Renaissance at West River, one-hundred percent affordable, all seniors. The T-two-A project, Bethon High Rise, is an eight-story, one-hundred-and-fifty-unit, one-hundred percent affordable building for seniors. And then we start with our mixed-income sites. All of our family buildings are mixed-income, mixed-income, some all affordable mixed-income, meaning some of them will be public housing, Section Eight, and tax credit housing. But we have a mix of mixed-income developments here from the A, B, C, and D buildings. Some of them are seventy percent affordable, eighty percent affordable buildings. And Brett will walk you through each of those phases with what the affordability set of size are, as well as what the funding is.
Well, that's kind of what I want to get into with, Mr. Dingfelder, when you say affordable. I want to know.
Thank you.
What are we talking about, some price ranges? Low, moderate, high? I want to know what dollar amount we're talking, if I'm a tenant moving in, where do I fit in?
Yes, love to talk about that as well. Affordable for a housing authority is anything below eighty percent of area median income. These are all rental buildings, so these are not for sale condos. So they have rent set affordable to persons that are earning below eighty percent of area median income. Eighty percent of area median income for the city of Tampa, I think, is about forty-six, forty-seven thousand dollars for a family of four. Public housing is limited to people earning below eighty percent of area median income. All of these buildings, however, are actually, when we mention affordable, we're talking about below sixty percent of area median income. So it's an even deeper affordability than what it was when this was North Boulevard. When this was North Boulevard, you could have people making up to eighty percent area median income. Under West River, they can make in affordable units no more than sixty percent of area median income. Okay?
Just a quick question. The number, the people who were displaced from this area before, it was 1,000 or 1,200 families, something like that, have we built, since that time, a couple of years ago, have we built that number of units? Or, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about that we have a shortage of 20,000 to $50,000, 50,000 homes. But just in this project, the people who were displaced, I know they all moved somewhere else, but have we, have we built that many units somewhere else since that happened?
Not since that happened. Relocation happened in the last two years. We actually relocated 820 families, total families, not 1,000 families. So there's 820 total units at North Boulevard. Only 670 units were actually demolished. So of the 670 units that we've demolished, we have fully funded or under construction, as of today, 932 units of housing on this site. The families that was relocated two years ago moved into existing housing elsewhere. Some of them moved into our Encore Development, some of them moved into one of any number of our other 30 properties throughout the city. Some of them have seen the Section Eight voucher and actually relocated onto the private market with a voucher.
Thank you.
So, under the Section Eight or public housing program, 100% of those families, when they relocate off, unless their income changed, their rent is the same as what it was when they were living in North Boulevard, even though they may now be living at Encore, as an example.
All right. Any other questions, Councilman Dingfelder? No? On any other items? No, but this gentleman is going to fill in one more piece.
Yeah, obviously Leroy, Brett Green with the Related Group. Obviously Leroy did a great job of explaining quite a bit of it. You know, we have great momentum going on at the site right now. As Leroy mentioned, we have over, you know, 900 units that are under construction or in planning. What you see here, A, B, and C of the T3 block, we'll start construction on those within the next 60 days or so. The T3 block, we designed it so that the parking would be in the middle, and we've done our best to keep the, all the fabric, you know, of the neighborhood with all the trees. We came before the council a couple of months back to allow us to do some certain things with it. We came last week for the replat, so we appreciate the ongoing support. For what you're approving here today, Buildings A and B, you're committing a million dollars of city funding to Building A. We brought over $20 million of other public funding. Your commitment of a million gave us a special priority in the state's competitive funding, so your million went a long way to allowing these projects to go forward. And then, Building A is 119 units. Building B is 133 units, as Leroy mentioned, also mixed income, so primarily affordable for residents below 60% of area median income. But also, we have a piece of it that's going to be for workforce housing, so, you know, various different income levels. We got housing for people of all income here on the property, and that was an important piece to us, you know, making sure that all the families could coincide together. So, again, Building B is 133 units. You're committing $750,000. Again, because of the city's commitment to the project, that allowed us to get over $23 million of public funding for this project as well. So, the city's money is being, you know, highly leveraged, and we're going to spend it wisely.
Go ahead, sir. Is it Brett?
Yes.
Thank you, Brett. Listen, I know your company, the Related Company, is, you guys are in a lot of different areas. You're doing market, market-rate apartments right over here across the river. I think you just opened those recently.
Right.
I think you've got a lot of things going on around town, and I think it's great in addition to this project. What I'm wondering about is, and this was a couple, I think, well, on these, A and B, I think adds up to 250 units or something like that. That's fantastic. Still, we have a huge need. So, and the only way we can dig out of this is with public-private partnership, and that's what this represents in its best form. My question is, what, in two minutes or less, what can we do as a city to help inspire the private sector, including your company and others, to do more, to do more out there? And in the city, to address the affordable housing needs?
Yeah, it's a great question, and actually, I've had conversations with the mayor's office, and I met with actually Councilman Goodell about this a little while ago. There's certain incentives that can be put together, and I know the mayor put together a council on trying to create ideas for how to, you know, best practices and so forth. There's some, you know, relaxations in zoning, parking reductions, you know, streamlined permitting process, impact fee waivers, you know, these all go directly to the bottom line of creating affordable housing. And at current, at this present time, the City of Tampa doesn't have too many of those. We do a substantial amount of work in Miami-Dade County, and I will say that your permitting process here is amazing compared to what we do down there. But they do have quite a few incentives that, you know, increase the density. So, you know, if you can normally build 20 units an acre, if you're building affordable, you can now build 30 units an acre. That obviously reduces the price of the land, and the cost of parking in urban areas is, you know, super expensive, $20,000, $30,000 per parking space. If you reduce the amount of parking that's required in certain urban areas where you may not need it, you can have other forms of transit, you know, those go to further affordable housing. So those are, you know, some of the things that could be looked at as well.
And in return, I guess, the commitment from the property owner, assuming it's a rental situation, remains in place probably in perpetuity in terms of those units remaining affordable?
More or less, yeah. When we apply for funding from the state, they make you commit to keeping it affordable for 50 years at least, so...
For how long?
50 years.
50?
Yeah.
Five-zero, okay.
There's been some, you know, advocates throughout the state trying to get those levels reduced. We certainly, and Tampa Housing and Leroy are not for that. We, when we develop affordable housing, you know, we never take them out of the program. Mr. Perez, the chairman of our company, has developments that he built when he first started in the development business back in the 70s that remain affordable today. So we're, it's a big part of our business. Not a lot of people know that affordable housing is a part of Related's business, but it's, we have a big group, and we're focused on these type of redevelopments.
Thanks, sir. And Councilman, was Citrus?
Citrus.
And then, Mr. Goodell?
Right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is looking like a wonderful, bright opportunity for the City of Tampa, especially with affordable housing. Part and parcel comes employment and transportation. Does, is there any plans for employment within this 1, 2, 3, 4, 5-square-block area? And where is the transportation hub? If not, where is the transportation hub going to be to get the people that are living here that need employment?
Well, I mean...
Well, go ahead.
I mean, certainly, obviously, there's a substantial amount of construction job opportunities here, and we've made a commitment to set aside a portion of those jobs for the local community through the Section Three program. We're working with our contractors, Suffolk Construction, they've built in the community for quite some time, and we're, at this point, we're meeting those goals. There will be some long-term opportunities here. There will be retail in each one of these buildings. You know, all along Main Street, there'll be retail. We have several pads, the purple area here that you see, GS and R1, and potentially on the opposite corner, on the corner of Main Street and North Boulevard, where there'll be some retail opportunities. And I will tell you that over the last six months, we've seen a very large pickup in interest in the area. So we're excited about what's coming here, but, you know, there is retail opportunities at some point in the future.
Thank you for answering part of my question.
In the office building, I'm...
I'm glad to hear that people won't have to get into their cars to travel somewhere else to maybe buy groceries or get the necessities. What about transportation hub?
So there obviously is, there's a couple of bus routes. I know they no longer pick up on Main Street, but I believe they'll be able to bring that back when the neighbors, you know, all the neighbors come back to the community. I'm not sure...
Yeah, that's certainly outside of our immediate control, but we've been working with what is hard or DOT, and certainly every effort that the city and the county come together, you know, to look at more modern transportation systems. We try to be at the table to support it. We're building the densities that will support more modern mass transit linkages, so that when we eventually do get to that port, you know, you've got a much bigger population here that can take advantage of that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilman Goodell and Councilman Carlson.
Since my name was mentioned, I believe that, you know, we have a housing crisis, but I don't believe we're addressing it the way we should address it. We have assets in this city, but we're not addressing the assets we have. Rehab is a key asset to making communities better. I like the projects we're doing, but I want to make sure that the projects that we are doing, that people are having an opportunity to make sure they have a chance to get in to these opportunities. When you talk about helping or what we can do to help developers, I'm all about incentives like we talked about, but, you know, I have to get a guarantee on my investment as well. And that's why I talk about those community business owners agreements. They're very key, because if I'm giving you something, I want to make sure that we're going to be giving back to that community as well. And that is key and a focal point. So if we can give, happy to give, but I want guarantees when we give, that we're getting an investment back to the people who are living in there, who we uproot, are talking about bringing back or uprooting their community as they once knew. So, I'm all in favor of redevelopment, but when we redevelop it, and I'm hoping that the staff is understanding why I keep talking about this community business owners is a very key component to allude to what we talked about in my office, about giving. And I like to give, but I also want something back in return, and I want to make sure that this project is going to the West River, because people say all kind of things, well, what we will do, what we can't do. You know, we can do what we want to do, but I just want to make sure that people can actually live over there on that West River, because it's the waterfront problem. And we're probably on mixed income, and we're doing a great job at Encore, people are happy over there, because you've got a mix in it, and that's true to its form right now. And I'm hoping that this project on the West River will be true to us from what Encore is doing.
So, one of the great things about being in partnership with the Housing Authority is that they have some federal mandates that require that anybody that lived there has the first opportunity to move back into the development. Also, like Leroy was saying, and Brett was saying, the Section Three requirement requires that they provide job opportunities to Tampa Housing Authority residents. So, you've got job commitments that are being met, and they're required to meet them not only for the city, but they're required to meet them for the federal government, as well as having the people move back in. Like they told you, several of the buildings are strictly low-income. So, the opportunity for residents to live in that area and to enjoy the benefits of living along the river are guaranteed by the federal government, but it is a part of their business model, so as part of...
Is there a list, though? We talk about people who have the first opportunity to come back. Is there a current list of those residents who moved out, so we can have that list and say, this is the list, this is the role? We have that?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
They're required to maintain that list. They can provide you a copy of that list. They're required to make contact with all of those. They track them in between when the project is taken offline and when it comes back online.
Yeah, that's what we do for all of our redevelopments, is no different. And we, when the first building goes into lease-up, residents who qualify, these are income-restricted, the first two buildings. So those that are 62 and older automatically get called by their case manager. They get bugged by their case manager for several months. Are you sure you're ready? Are you sure you don't want to come back? You know, this is the opportunity. They actually bring them there for tours, trying to, you know, let them see. One thing that we always point out, though, is that, you know, our relocation process is a very unique relocation process, you know, when you look at nationwide examples of multifamily redevelopments like this site. We do a lot of training and orientation and opportunities that are given through the relocation process. Our residents choose based on purpose. It's a purposeful choice for them when they relocate off-site, because they may want to stay there where they moved to. And our return rate is about 15% or less on these massive redevelopments. As beautiful as Encore is, less than 15% choose to come back to Encore. Why? Because they've done, you know, great due diligence on the front end in terms of choosing a neighborhood with purpose, closer to families, closer to jobs, closer to schools, closer to church. Whatever their personal needs are, they are given that opportunity when they relocate off-site. So moving back is not essential to them, it's an option for them. And they reserve that right until the last building is actually placed in the service on the site. Everybody who was relocated have the first guaranteed right to come back to this site, and if they choose to come back, we pay the relocation cost back to the site. So, it's what we've done for 20 years in this community, and it's no different. It's actually been, the process at West River has benefited from 20 years of perfecting that process and getting it right and improving on what was right last year. So, you know, we're really proud of our relocation...
But just how you're telling the story right now, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Just how you're telling the story right now?
Yes.
A lot of people don't know that, I know the history of the story. And that's the problem that a lot of times with government, there are amenities available, there are programs available, but we don't tell the story so people can get at to get the necessary product. I see it all the time, and I think that's the key, is making sure people know about the product. We talked about developers trying to find a way to help the developers, especially when you got a lot of dilapidated buildings that we have, that we can be fixing those up for housing as well. You know, there are a lot of things we can do, but what I continue to say, and I tell my colleagues, a lot of times, a lot of problems, when I'm getting in my office right now regarding to our own rehab program, I'm getting so many denial letters from people. I remember a lady yesterday who's 70 years old, who was denied, because she exceeded the house, or another lady, another passage question, I won't mention, but I've got a list in my office right now about our own housing rehab program that I'm going to be bringing up to address, because we've got to find some dollars that are not matched with some federal dollars, if that's the case, that are precluding people from getting housing. So, we've got to look at these roadblocks as well, because there are other roadblocks that are not helping us help people. And that's why I keep saying about rehab, because there are assets, but we've got to help people that are living in those communities with money to get them moving. And I just think that's a big part of the process and a big roadblock that we're facing.
Thank you. Councilman Carlson.
So, I'm one of the new city council members, and if you could just let me know, let the public know, in addition to these items that we have here, what, by the time you're finished with all of this, what will be this, just the city's participation, not the Housing Authority, but how much will the city have put into all of this?
That's about...
Brett? I'm sorry. Put us quick.
Just curious, not criticizing.
How much will the city put into this?
Yeah, how much, how much, how much participation will the city have in this financially?
It's close to $4 million.
And then, what about the, back to the other slide, the spaces that are empty, like the one along 275 of the southeast corner, and then the T6 and the CNA? Is that, is that included in your $4 million estimate?
Yes, this is...
No, sorry. The $4 million is in this area.
Okay. And then, will the city be participating in any of the rest of it?
So, yes, the cities, so some of the state funding applications require some level of local government contribution.
Yeah.
We just received a local government contribution for an application that we are submitting for funding here in the next couple of weeks for the T4 block, and that would be to build 107 units, and the city will potentially be contributing $75,000 to that.
Is that market rate, or...
No, that will be, that will be all affordable, correct. And we also have some funding applications that are currently in on the T4 block to build, you know, 100 more or less units with little to no city participation.
What about the blank blocks? How much do you expect the city will put in for those?
That is hard to say, because they would have to go through a process.
Okay.
And so, it's a competitive process. In this last process, we had a competitive process. Related received $75,000 rather than the $750,000 that they requested, because the other developer, which is going to be building in East Tampa, had the winning proposal.
Has somebody hit the switch? All right, thank you.
Hit the switch, huh?
Thank you.
Enter back one.
That's a first. I've never seen it.
Anything else? Okay, Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, just briefly, and I don't, I'm very positive about all this. I'm thrilled for the report. I just want to clarify one thing, because I don't want us to pat ourselves on the back too much. Items 30 and 32, from what I can see, is $1,750,000 of federal money that we're graciously passing through to these projects. It's great. I'm glad. But we don't have a whole lot of money in our local budget to do these things. And we've been talking about this for at least the last six months, that we need to, we need to figure out a local funding source...
Yes.
...to enhance these programs and grow these programs. And, because like I say, the Lord give it, the Lord take it away, the Fed, that federal money comes and goes and seems to get smaller and smaller and smaller. So we need to become more self-sufficient in that regard. I'm thrilled that the county, I think, they have a little bigger budget, but they set aside $10 million this past year for affordable housing. And I'm not, I'm not being critical of the mayor by any means whatsoever, but we need to start, we need to, we need to start figuring out a way to do it more locally, or in addition to the federal money, to do it locally as well. Thank you.
And I believe you'll see that when the Affordable Housing Advisory Team's report comes out. You'll see those recommendations as well.
Great, great, thank you.
And Councilman Dingfelder, I know all of these had to do with affordable housing. Are you looking at having, looking at each of these separately, because you had just mentioned 30, 32, or...
No, I'm done with all of them.
Okay. Do you mind moving them, sir?
I'd be glad to move.
Thank you.
24...
Substitute.
Substitute resolution, 24 to 27, where applicable, 30 and 32.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Escaut, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thanks for the report.
Oh, yeah, and thank you. Okay, next we move, I believe, to item forty-eight.
Good morning, counsel. Dennis Rehero, interim chief financial officer. I am here on item forty-eight along with the purchasing director and the technology and innovation director to answer any of your questions.
Any questions?
Forty-eight.
Okay, being done, may I have someone move the resolution? Motion by Councilman Escaut, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
Next we move onward to item number forty-nine. Anybody here for forty-nine?
Morning. Kelly Austin, Human Resources. And we are here to answer any questions on item forty-nine.
Any questions on item forty-nine?
Move the resolution.
And is this the?
And that would be the substitute resol, I mean, addendum.
Then move the substitute resolution.
I have a question. I mean, is this the, is this the one with United and what was it, Cigna or Aetna?
Yeah, so this is our medical plan for the city and it's, we awarded the contract to United Healthcare.
Forty-nine. Um, is this, when it comes to this one, did Cigna, was there, somebody had spoken to me about this some time ago, I believe, with the bidding process, had Cigna come out ahead or then United or?
Yeah, so this was open for RFP and we followed the process. I was not part of the committee. The former director retired. She was on the committee. So, the committee went down by one. They had round one of the candidates that moved on to round two where they had some finalists. And in that round two, the percentage of difference between the number one and the number two was very, very close. Based on the savings that United Healthcare could bring forward, which is about one-point-two-eight million over the three-year agreement, and some concerns we had with the formulary that Cigna was offering, and some concerns that we had about Cigna's ability to, to work with our wellness centers that we have in place, the decision was made to award the contract to United Healthcare. There was a protest. However, Cigna was not the party that protested. It was another carrier that hadn't even made it into the finalists. So, we let that protest play out. And then after that protest was concluded, we awarded it to United Healthcare.
Was, so Cigna was up by what, one point or something?
It was miniscule. If you don't mind. Greg. It was, it was so small, but I don't want to give you a bad number.
Good morning, Greg, sir, I'm the purchasing director. As Ms. Austin was saying, the difference was very, very miniscule. So, when we begun to pull, peel back the onion between the two proposals in terms of the additional benefits of the city, as Ms. Austin has pointed out, the recommendations were made by the Human Resource Department toward, to United Healthcare.
I'm sorry, councilman?
What's the number? I keep hearing, we're not asking the question, answering the question. We've asked twice. I don't hear about miniscule, I want to know what the number was.
I believe the point difference was about two points.
No, I want to hear, I want to hear what the number was, not about, I want to know what it was.
I don't have those details.
Who has that?
I don't have the details in front of me, Councilman Goode, but I can tell.
Who has it?
We can provide, I can provide.
Let's provide that. We want to know what the number was.
Okay.
We can probably defer it till later in the meeting.
Yeah, we'll do the numbers.
Okay. How about we defer this until, after fifty-six? How long do y'all need to get those numbers?
Uh, just a few minutes.
Okay, okay, we'll defer this then.
All right.
Okay, we'll move onward to item number fifty. Who's here for fifty?
Good morning, city council members. We have a contract that we would like to award to the David Nelson Construction Company. It's for three-point-seven million dollars and change for the Thirty-Four Street Corridor improvement project that we are planning to do. And so, we're here to get your approval of that contract. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about the award of that contract.
Councilman Goode.
Apologize, I didn't give my name. Jean Duncan, Transportation and Stolen Water Services Department.
Item fifty and fifty-one, that's pertaining to the roundabout, correct?
The Thirty-Four Street Corridor project, which includes the roundabouts. Yes, sir.
And I, I, I hate to bring this up, Jean, but I, I mean, when citizens come in and make comments, I like to make sure that all the facts are there. A lady came this morning, said that we, they thought that we did not follow procedure by going through the NPO. Did you hear that this morning from me?
Yes, I did.
Can you elaborate on that, please?
Uh, that is unfortunately probably some misinformation that she's received. This project is partially funded by the NPO, or excuse me, Department of Transportation. And so, the Department of Transportation and the City of Tampa, we don't do any project that is not supported by the Long Range Transportation Plan. The Long Range Transportation Plan doesn't get into the details of whether there's a roundabout or not at an intersection, but it does support the improvement of the Thirty-Four Street Corridor. And as well, the funding for the project has to be approved by the NPO, which it has been done through the LAP process that we're in, which is the local agency program process we work with for the DOT. So, the NPO has approved this through that process. The DOT has approved the project through that process. And we've been working diligently for many years to try to make this corridor safer for the community. That is our, our goal and our mission and our desire. And so, we're here today to ask for your approval of awarding the contract to the low bidder, who's a very capable contractor, who will start the project next year.
What about my minority contract in, between this contract?
Yes.
How's that, how's that layout?
So, we have in this particular project an overall attainment of twenty-point-six-seven percent participation on this project with the contractor.
Is that a shall or is that a good faith or how do we, how's that written?
My information is an overall attainment. I'd have to ask Mr. Hart for further clarification of that, but my interpretation is that is the amount of participation we will see on the contract.
Good morning, Gregory Hart, manager, equal business opportunity. Sir, that is a commitment. It's a twenty, twenty-point-six percent confirmed commitment on participation.
Now, I want to caution you, I, I, I hear that, but I want to make sure that if this council awards this particular contract, that twenty-point-six-seven you're saying, I want to make sure, some guarantee, that we're going to be monitored because I don't want to hear from my constituents on a project in their community that some are for and are against. And then they look out on that roadway and they don't see anybody that look like them from their community working on that project. So, I guarantee you, if they don't see anybody out there working, I'm going to get tons of calls that we got a roundabout that was, and work is being done, but we don't have minorities working. So, I, I, I need to know that we're going to be monitoring this contract, not just saying we're putting a contract out, but I want to make sure that we've got a guarantee in this council, and I'm telling my colleagues, because you know how important this is about this Thirty-Four Street project, because we're going to hear about it, that we are monitoring that project and making sure that we're attaining that goal. Am I clear on that?
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. And thank you to Councilman Goode for bringing up that point, Mr. Hart. Good news, bad news on this in regard to Wimby. On the cover page, it does confirm the twenty percent small business and women and minority of business total, which is, I think, a great. That's the good news. When you get to the last page and it has the breakout, again, I don't want to pat ourselves on the back too much because even though this is in East Tampa and goes right through the heart of the traditional African-American community, the breakout shows company by company that it's Hispanic male, Hispanic male, Caucasian male, Caucasian male. These are the ownerships. Caucasian female, Caucasian male, Caucasian female. From what I can see on that list, there's not one black-owned business. So, that's the bad news. I know we're, we're working together to improve this and make strides, but just out of fairness and open government, I just wanted to mention that.
More than likely, sir, I would expect that in terms of workforce employment, I would imagine that the prime contract, as well as some of these federal DBE and local WNBE firms, have ethnic minorities on their workforce. So, I too hope to see folks on the project.
Right. And I agree that on the workforce, it's a little harder to get into that nitty-gritty detail, but the way we build up our community is also to get that black-owned business. And I know we're working hard on it. I beat up on you every, every week or two on it and as do the rest of us. But anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, may I have someone move the resolution?
Some moved.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Escaut, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next we move to item fifty-three.
Excuse me, was that items fifty and fifty-one?
We'll move to, for clarification, move both resolutions.
Second on both.
Yep, okay, clarified. Fifty-three. Anyone here for fifty-three?
Good morning, Des Fernandez, Architecture Review and Historic Preservation Manager. I'm serving on the Robles Spark Village Zion Cemetery Advisory Committee. And I believe.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Zelman, you had to.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just want to let you know that Kelly has the answer on the question about the health insurance, if you wanted to wrap that up before beginning this.
Oh, yeah, of course, well.
Sorry.
Let's, um, is, we'll give it a minute, see if Councilman Goode comes because he's the one who asked the question.
He has now Orlando now.
That's funny. I guess, is, is councilman? Okay. Sorry, buddy. Item forty-nine, for your question.
Thank you.
Good morning, Greg Spearman, purchasing and Kelly Austin, Human Resources. Councilman Goode, to answer your question, the, the number of points for Cigna was one-seventy-seven and United Healthcare was one-seventy-six. There was only one point difference.
That's out of two-hundred.
That's out of two-hundred.
Points on the scoring.
Well, that's good, but you know, you know, when we're deliberating on situations here, the public needs to know what was the number. I think that's critical, that people know well how people score. I mean, if we're going to make the decision, we can't say it was miniscule, we can't, you know, if I'm in a race, I want to know what my score was. I'm a track star, I want to know what the score, every track star wants to know what the score was. So, I, it just was important to me to know what that score was. Thank you.
And, oh, go ahead, sir.
I don't, I don't know anything very much about this issue, but I just want, since you discussed it, I want to ask a question. You mentioned some other criteria used that, that put the second company above the first company. Wouldn't those, those criteria have been included in the scoring?
Yes.
Yes, they were.
They were.
And so.
We, we don't evaluate any RFPs on criteria that's not in the request proposal. Everything has to be in the RFP.
But if it's, so the question is, and again, I don't know as much as you all about this, so I'm just asking a question. If, if it's, if they've already gotten, if the second bidder already got credit for the items that you mentioned, it sounds like we gave them double credit. I know we're only one point apart, but isn't it, if, if it's already been counted once, why, why would we?
No one gets double credit. There's not a double credit.
But if they've already, if they've already been evaluated based on those criteria, then, and the other company, forgot the companies, but if the first company.
What they are allowed to do is to come back with the best and final. And that's what happened in this particular instance. And when that process occurred, as Ms. Austin pointed out, there were some very distinct and unique differences between the two companies. And that's what made the difference.
Councilman? Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I can't speak for the rest of the council because I may be the only person on the council that has this health benefit, but what is the cost-effectiveness to either plan for the, for the employees and for the city of Tampa?
So, the United Healthcare Agreement, that's a three-year agreement, will offer us one-point-two-eight million in savings in addition to continuing that relationship that we have with the wellness centers. United Healthcare has integrated very well with us on the wellness centers. And that was important to us. Cigna wasn't able to display with any confidence that they would be able to pick up that mantle and continue that relationship with the wellness centers. So, that was pretty important to us as well. And there were some, as I had mentioned earlier, some restrictions on the formulary on the Cigna option that we thought would be a little bit disruptive to the employees. But the overall savings, to answer your initial question, over the three years that United is providing us versus the current contract, the previous contract that we had with them, is one-point-two-eight million over three years with all of the things that they've put forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, councilman, go ahead, sir. I got a little confused. So, I'm in this race and it's three of us in this race, Orlando Goode Healthcare.
Okay.
And it's a miniscule point, but I'm a number-three person and I'm able to come in and talk to you again and resubmit something and say that I can, I can give a better number. So, I guess I would get the bid because I'm a number-three guy and I came in and gave you some more benefits. Is that what I'm hearing?
The final candidates all had the opportunity to come back in and give us their last best and final offer. So, it wasn't exclusive to one provider over the other. And I think it's important that we, we know and understand that the, the RFP process, while obviously, you know, you have a scoring mechanism that you use to determine the criteria, ultimately, that decision lies with us and Human Resources to select the plan that's in the best interest of the City of Tampa and the employees. And essentially, it was a statistical dead heat, you know, we were one point off, but when we looked at what United Healthcare brought to the table, we felt that was in the best interest of the city and the employees, and that is why the decision was made to award the contract to United Healthcare. But we are not bound by who merely scores the highest on the RFP process. Clearly, that should be an indicator, but we're talking a one-point difference. And so, that's where we had to kind of boil it down and really look at what were the advantages and disadvantages of both carriers. And that's the decision that we arrived at.
Anyone else? And I got a question for you. This, this, this is why this, I guess, kindled in my mind, so to speak, this will have no bearing on proposals. I know police and fire have talked about health trust. This has no relevancy to that whatsoever, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I prefer to keep that broad, you know, because my union partners aren't here, but we had a three-year agreement with United Healthcare with the option for two extensions, which we had done. So, we were out of, of extensions. So, we had to put it out for bid. We have healthcare obligations, obviously, to everybody in the city. And with the proposals that are being brought forth by IAFF and PBA, their proposals, should it go to fruition, wouldn't go into effect until 2021 regardless. So, what we bargain across the table will have no impact on what we needed to get accomplished here and vice versa. Now, potentially, based on where we end with negotiations as it relates to the desire for a healthcare trust, United could come back to us and say, "Wait a minute, we need to reevaluate your plan, your three-year agreement, because now your population is different." But, but, you know, I, I don't want to speculate on what that looks like because that's not fair to my, my union partners.
I get it.
But, you know, clearly, there could probably be some evaluation if that was to happen. But it won't stop or prevent us from bargaining in good faith what their desire is for a healthcare trust.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
Sure.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Bennett and I had the same discussion yesterday, and I guess I just want to make sure from you guys and perhaps Legal, who, whichever Legal is working on this contract, that there is an express, there is an express provision in the United Agreement that allows for the revisiting of this in, in terms of that it would be reopened. And I guess I'm confused in terms of how, how, how that, what that language is in terms of, you know, how they reopen it.
Dave, do you happen to have the? Dave might have that. It may or may not occur. They may let us ride out.
I understand there's a lot of ifs.
Yeah, yeah.
But the lawyer in me says, let's, let's make sure that, you know, how, if those ifs come to fruition, as you said, how the city deals with that because that, that's a big issue.
It, it is potentially a very big issue for the city.
If we lose potentially, you know, half or, you know, half of our population or a third of our population.
Roughly about fifteen-hundred, give or take, depending on what the head count looks like at that time.
Right, so maybe a third of our healthcare population.
Yes.
Then, then, what, what would or could United do to us at that point? And do we lose all the gains that, that we made?
That is a potential, yes. That is a potential.
So, who were you looking at back there?
Uh, Dave was gonna see if he had, he's got the contract, the United Healthcare contract. He was just gonna see if he could find it briefly.
Right. And I know it sounds like we're spending a lot of time on this, but this is, I think I read forty-nine million dollars, um, in terms of our annual-
Actually, this plan is fifty-eight, uh, million annually.
Fifty-eight million, yeah. So, it's a big deal.
It is a very big deal, yes, sir. I mean, as far as the bargaining goes, though, whatever actions United could take in the event that there was a healthcare trust bargained, we, we can't not bargain it. So, I mean, we would just have to, you know, roll with the punches as they come. If that was to be something that came to fruition, we would have to deal with that and reevaluate with the smaller population, because the rest of us and the ATU would still remain behind. And we would have to, if necessary, renegotiate with United or, you know, put it out for an RFP and, and see what the market would bear at that time.
But you're, but you're saying we would at least have a year to address it, uh, from right now?
You're exactly right, yes. Because anything that the union is looking to put forward, they're not even looking to have it go into effect until plan year 2021. So, we would have all of twenty to, to work through that.
Mr. Spearman, what did you learn?
Typically, in all of our contracts, um, we do have a termination for convenience and also a termination for, for cause. As I was just confirming with our Benefits Manager, uh, how that works in this particular case. So, Dave, you want to address that?
Yes. Thank you. Dave Blaisworth, Benefits Manager, Human Resources. Um, the carriers, as part of the RFP process, um, we, they, they propose their fees based upon an enrollment count that we give them. If that enrollment count changes materially, um, um, in the RFP response, they have the ability, that, that would trigger a recalculation of the fee. Now, what the fee would recalculate to would, would really be based upon, uh, negotiation between the carrier and the city at that point in time. The change in enroll-
If that wasn't satisfactory, then we could go into the termination process?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we would know the answer to that question early, earlier rather than later, based upon, um, the Police and Fire proposal and, and where that goes, um, with time to, to make the necessary change.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? I guess, sir. I guess I just- I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman Dingfelder.
I'd just like to, I've heard all about insurance and disinsurance and that. I come from CS University called common sense, something we don't practice anymore. But we really don't have insurance with anyone. We're self-insured.
You're absolutely right. They are our administrator.
Insurance, 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 and it's all not fabricated in the right way, because we are self-insured.
You're correct. We are self-funded.
What they're doing is handling the paperwork and the items and the costs related to what we need. Am I correct?
Yes. We dictate what the plan's gonna look like. They administer it first.
In fact, I was one of the originators of the health clinics, and I voted against my own idea. Because one of them's in Brandon, and we're paying seventy-five hundred dollars a month. The other one's in Tampa, we're paying seventy hun, seventy-five hundred dollars a month. That's fifteen thousand a month, times how many years? Times how many months? We lost over two million dollars. The city of Tampa should not be paying rent, should have their own building. I've said that every year I've been in office, and it doesn't happen. And I'm not blaming you.
I know.
I'm blaming us. So, that's in my story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goots?
I, I guess I, I always look at fairness, I guess. That's high deal. When was this RFP put out and when did it close?
Oh, gonna need, when was the RFP put out and when was it closed?
Why is it coming to us so late for approval?
Well, part of that delay, Councilman, would have been due to the fact that there was a protest, and there's time periods associated with that. So, when there was a protest by one of the carriers who did not make the, the top two, I think it was the third or fourth carrier, um, that protest, there's a period of time that has to go by for them to be allowed to protest, for the city to respond to that protest, and then determine whether or not they're gonna proceed. They opted to not proceed after they got the city's response. And at that point, we could then go in and award the contract to United Healthcare.
When did we give out that response? And did Cigna, well, Cigna was not one of the ones that protested, correct?
Uh, no, Cigna did not protest. No, sir.
Anything else? Okay. Any other questions from council on item number forty-nine? So, we're, we're gonna be saving, I think you said, one point four year-
One point two eight over three years.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from council on this item before we move? Okay. What's the pleasure of council? No? Motion by Councilman Mendes-Caco.
Item forty-nine.
Uh, council, uh, second by Councilman Miranda.
Up to two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, next we move to the one that we interrupted, item fifty-three.
Once again, good morning, council members. Dennis Fernandez, Architecture Review and Historic Preservation Manager. Been participating in the advisory committee related to the Zion Cemetery, uh, property. Leroy Moore with the Tampa Housing Authority and the Archaeological Team is here. I think they are better suited to provide you with the broadest depth of knowledge on this.
Thank you, Dennis, and good morning again, council.
Mr. Moore, you get to be regular with us pretty soon.
No complaints. But thank you, guys, for your interest and wanting to get an update on the Robles Zion Cemetery matter. Um, we passed out previously to you a three-page handout that just gives you a little bit of the history, how we came to be aware of the existent, the potential existence of Zion, and what we, the Housing Authority, did immediately after, uh, hearing, uh, that discovery from the reporter. Um, this whole story was, um, was, um, you know, the whole rediscovery of Zion was, um, due to just incredible journalism, uh, locally here. And, um, you know, when we first heard about it, um, you know, there was just this disbelief that that could possibly be true. So, we immediately, within a month, hired Cardinal to actually kick off a, what we call a Phase One environmental site assessment. Uh, that's where we actually, um, start our redevelopment processes. Literally a year before we started any relocation, we start with a Phase One environmental to see what the environmental historical, uh, significance of the area is, what could possibly be underground there in form of, you know, gas tanks and, you know, environmental hazards that have leached onto the site, so that as we start the redevelopment process, we can plan with all that knowledge and information. And, uh, through the Phase One environmental, confirmed the previous existence of a cemetery on a small portion. And, uh, page one of what I passed out to you, the square, it's actually not a square, it's more, um, it's, it's a little smaller than the square there. But I just wanted to show you Robles Park in relation to what we now know as Zion. Robles Park is, um, a, thirty-five acre site. Uh, the Housing Authority, back in, uh, early fort, late nineteen forties, early nineteen fifties, acquired all this land to actually develop this four hundred and thirty-three unit residential community now known as Robles Park Village. And a small portion of that, uh, that's represented, uh, within the yellow box there, was land that was previously Zi, Zion Cemetery. So, we knew now that we had confirmed that a cemetery once existed. Um, we, and I say "we," meaning the current administration, because back in nineteen fifty-one, as, uh, we've discovered through, um, through the, the investigative journalism, as well as our Phase One and Phase Two environmental processes, uh, the Housing Authority, actually, during the construction of Robles, back in nineteen fifty-one, actually dug up, uh, caskets in that particular area and confirmed that they were bodies that were originally interned at Zion. Uh, what happened with that, um, that that caused the Housing Authority to rethink proceeding with the development of, um, these five buildings in particular, over what they should have at that time known as Zion. No one alive today that could actually give you any, uh, firsthand knowledge of that. But, um, you know, those decisions that was made by generations past, uh, have now been discovered, uh, in this effort. And, uh, we're about trying to, um, do the right thing, the most honorable thing that we can. The first thing we did, uh, when we discovered Zion does indeed exist, and it's under a portion of Robles Park Village, it's not under all of Robles Park, it's under a portion of Robles Park, was that we identified those five buildings that was impacted. We met with the families. We assembled a Zion Archaeological Consultation Committee that consists of twenty-two members of our community, people that are actively involved on issues like this and, uh, want to get to the right and responsible, uh, solution. Uh, we knew that this was gonna be a very difficult, very emotional, at-time discoveries. Um, and we wanted to have a good, solid, uh, committee that actually represented the whole, the whole community. Uh, both people who currently live there, our resident council leadership is part of the committee, city of Tampa, uh, I think there's four or five members from city of Tampa that's part of the committee. Uh, but we also have, uh, community activists and NAACP and, and archaeological professionals, uh, USF and others that are part of that committee. So, um, you know, I think we, you know, one of the best things we did was assemble this committee of real clear voices that, uh, you know, want to get to the right solution. And they certainly have guided us to, uh, where we are today, which is knowing that Zion existed. Secondly, knowing that unfortunately those bodies are still interned there. Uh, the ones that we've discovered to date, uh, we think is still not all that is interned there. Uh, but, uh, we have x-rayed that portion of the ground that's easily accessible as of today. Uh, we've started the relocation of the thirty-two units that sit on top of Zion. And, um, of the thirty-two units, twenty-nine was occupied at the time. Nineteen of those families, as of this week, have relocated. Uh, we've made vouchers available, as well as, uh, all of our other vacancies that exist throughout the city. We've gone through the same kind of relocation process, which is a real patient, very thorough, very, um, you know, evolved and detailed relocation process that we would go through when we're doing redevelopment, because we want these families to benefit from that same level of counseling and case management. So, all the families actually have case management. They're all getting assistance. We're paying for all the relocation costs. We're making it such that they can relocate and not have a increase in cost of, uh, housing. And, um, and they're choosing incredibly good communities to move into. Uh, so, when that relocation is complete, I'd love to actually share with you where those twenty-nine families have moved to. I have with me members from Cardinal. Cardinal is the engineering firm.
Before, sir, Councilman Carlson, there's a quick question.
Sorry, just a quick question. Um, are the families that you, thank you for handling this whole effort so sensitively and, and proactively. But, um, of the families that have been relocated, did any of them want to stay, or were they all happy to get out?
Yeah, that was an option, because we've, we have forty and thirty-three units at Robles. So, the option is to relocate to another unit that's not over Zion at Robles. Not one of the families wanted to stay, uh, at Robles. So, uh, it's their choice. Uh, if they want to stay, they will be allowed to stay. If they want Section Eight, we put a voucher in their hand and assist them with getting relocated. And if they want to relocate to one of our other twenty-nine thirty properties, they get first right of any vacancy that comes up there.
And quick question by Councilman Goots.
You know, at times, I'm always out in the community, and people have questions for me. And when I don't have a definitive answer, I don't give an answer. So, I want to make sure I get it on record that, to ask this question. And that's why I asked for the history of that property, because people will say, what is city council doing? That's city land, city property. So, I want to make sure I, I get that on record to find out. That is, Robles Park, those properties, is owned by the Tampa Housing Authority and not the city of Tampa, correct?
That's correct. Correct.
So, the city of Tampa has no right or authority to do anything about that property, because it belongs to a private owner, which is the Tampa Housing Authority, correct?
Uh, there, there are certain streets that run through and around. Uh, there's a, a longstanding cooperation between the Housing Authority and city. We can't do anything in this community without that strong partnership. So, we never look at a problem like this as being, the Housing Authority is independent of any city guidance and consultation on a project like this. That's why we've included five members of the mayor's staff on this committee. And thank you, Mr. Goots, for actually being on the committee, as well as other council members who have actually come to the site and walked this area and actually, uh, wanted to actually see firsthand, uh, you know, what we're dealing with and also give advice.
And the reason I ask that question, because I don't want people to feel that this council is not actively engaged in what's going on. And that's why I want to make sure that people know.
The council certainly is, as well as the city of Tampa has been very involved. The mayor's actually attended one of our meetings, and her staff, Senator Cruz has attended several of our meetings, her staff, uh, Congresswoman Kathy Castor's staff has attended pretty much all of our, uh, archaeological meetings. So, um, we are not alone at all. And, um, you know, we're appreciative of everybody's involvement.
And after the presentation, we'll have Councilman Mendes-Caco, then Councilman Dingfelder, and then further comments. But go ahead, sir.
So, I want to move on to, uh, I want to introduce Eric Pendigast, as well as Paul Jones with Cardinal. They are our archaeological team. They've actually partnered with F Penn as well, out of USF. Um, and they've been the ones that have actually been confirming this discovery for us, creating a work plan, and helping us, uh, with, uh, the decisions that we've got to make. So, I want them to come up and actually lead you through a more formal presentation.
Thank you, council members. I'm Paul Jones with Cardinal and Eric Pendigast. We'd, uh, like to make a presentation to you today, um, with parts of what we've presented to the county, uh, board, the THA Board, over the last several months. Um, this is gonna give you, I think, a good overview of what's been happening. And we're here to answer specific questions for you as well. Just a quick background, I'm a former president of the Florida Archaeological Council, um, and a, a registered professional archaeologist. I'm also the principal in charge with Cardinal for this project. Eric is the principal investigator, means he's the onsite director, and he'll be writing the report, and he'll be in charge of the, uh, all the technical work and comprehensive work that goes on in a project like this. Eric's prepared a slideshow for us today. We're gonna do that if we can, if that's all right with the committee. And then we'd like to answer questions after that.
And just so that we know, no rush, but roughly how long is your presentation?
Ten slides.
Okay.
I can zip through it pretty quick.
Just, just for my information. Go ahead.
If we can pull it up. I don't know how to, though. I gave someone a thumb drive at the beginning. So, this is just, for anyone that doesn't know where Zion is, uh, this giving, uh, that red polygon is the shape of the cemetery. We know it is that shape because this is the nineteen oh-one plat that was filed. It's one of the first African-American cemeteries in Tampa. Uh, there's several very early ones. Um, and as Fred Hearns told our committee, the first African-American interments were actually not here. They were at, um, Oclon. Um, but in any case, this was important to the community of Robles Pond that lives in the area, and gave them a place to burial during the segregation era. Um, let's see if my slide will advance. We have a lot of, we have a pretty good amount of information about who was interred. We have seven hundred and sixty-three death certificates from those who were interred at Zion. Um, here's, unfortunately, between nineteen hundred and nineteen ten, the city didn't, didn't have death certificates. But you'll see from this graph, from nineteen ten on, uh, we're even able to tally how many people were dying each year. And our demographic information goes deeper than this. I'm just skimming through. Uh, then you'll notice in nineteen eighteen, nineteen nineteen, that's when memorial cemetery opens up. People are no longer being buried at Zion. But during this period, there could have been up to one thousand people buried there. And, like I said, we know for sure, seven hundred and sixty-three. Um, so, in order to find, uh, these graves, we did a pretty comprehensive, um, uh, application of ground penetrating radar. Everywhere that's in yellow on this map, um, is where we targeted our ground penetrating radar machines. Here's an example of two different types of equipment that we used, uh, in this next slide. These are both radar machines, but by using two different systems, we're actually able to confirm our results. Uh, we wanted to be very sure. This is what those results look like in a sample area of the cemetery. Those red polygons show reflections from beneath the ground, from the depth that a coffin would be expected to lie, oriented east-west, the correct size for a coffin. And these are all over the areas that we've tested within the Tampa Housing Authority's section, Robles Park Village, uh, that overlies the former location of Zion. Here's an example of how ground penetrating radar works. Those are, that's a slice on the right, um, showing reflections bouncing up from underground and being received by an antenna. Each of those parabolic shapes is an object. And then those correspond on the left, that red line showing you how those anomalies can be looked at, um, and how, how this technology can really show us where buried objects are without disturbing the ground. That's what we're looking at right now. That's a hundred and twenty-seven buried coffins. Um, and as Mr. Moore said, you know, now that we have this information, those gray polygons, those are representing the buildings from which people are being moved in a voluntary process right now. And once that can be completed, then we can, um, move forward with the ultimate goal of this project, which is to create a memorial and rememorialize this space, um, with hopefully partnership from the city and partnership and help from the state through a bill, state senate bill- from the city and partnership and help from the state through a bill, state senate bill twenty-twenty that's going through right now, and actually go to committee on Monday, which would maybe move the ball forward on these. This is what we've expanded in the last three weeks, this orange area is what we've been out doing more of. Actually, we have found no more graves, so it seems like we have the edges of the cemetery at this point. Moving forward, we are going to verify our finds by actually in the ground, looking for soil signatures that confirm absolutely that what we're dealing with are undisturbed buried coffins, so that in the future, these results can never be controverted or challenged. And like I said, then we want to move forward and with partnership with other groups, with our committee and our current team, work to build a memorial. I wanted to also underscore that this is not the only cemetery that is lost like this in Tampa, as we know from the newspapers lately. This is happening all over the place. On this map, I have College Hill, I have Ridgewood up there at King High School, Zion Cemetery, of course, and down in the very south at McDill, that would be the Port Tampa Cemetery. These are physical manifestations of violent racist pasts that are on the landscape of our city. And these obliterated cemeteries are not the result of like a single past event that we can look back and blame someone or something for. It takes decades of willful neglect and collective complacency on the part of all of us for things like this to happen. And if we want to see a cemetery that's being lost in real time, look at Memorial Park on Twenty-Second Street. The grass is growing, and soon we'll have another Zion, unless someone steps forward and takes responsibility for that. And we are really grateful for all, everyone that's come together and helped so far with this project, and we're really grateful to serve on it. And here, the last slide didn't work, but it was a list of all the seven-hundred-and-forty and sixty-three names that we know. There they are, that's the end of it. So, thank you.
Let me add a couple of items to Eric's comments. You noticed that he showed you the two different machines and mentioned the importance of duplicating our results. When we designed our work plan, one of the things we felt was most important was that the results were not just our results, but that we would have independent verification of everything we did. So, Cardinal owns a very high-tech piece of ground penetrating radar. It's called a Stream C, and it's got thirty-two antennas that record things at different levels and three-dimensional slices, all this kind of stuff. Very expensive piece of machinery, generally used and designed for finding underground utilities, but it's an excellent piece of equipment for finding cemeteries. The other piece of equipment was from the University of South Florida. That's their ground penetrating radar system. It's one of the older systems, but it's not a bad system. It's one of the more standard pieces of technology that's been in use for many years, and it's approved and understood by folks at the state division of historical resources, there's approvals for it. So, we wanted to use both of those and overlay the results on top of each other to make sure that we are both finding the same thing in the same place. That was extremely important for us. One of the other things that I think is important is you guys mentioned that you appreciated Leroy being proactive. He really has been an absolute model of what should go on when we find these sort of cemeteries and these sort of lost or purposely lost things. Taking an early proactive approach, getting the descendant communities involved very early in the process, means that everybody views this in a much more positive light. And the Tampa Housing Authority and city, everybody looks much better when they proactively approach these sort of things. And it shows in the newspaper, when, when the responses to this are, yes, we looked at this early, yes, we immediately found this, yes, we relocated people voluntarily, that sort of thing, really made this a very positive event of the many, many cemetery relocations I've worked on. So, just my personal note there at the end.
Thank you, gentlemen. And before I go to Councilman Naskalko, Ms. Zelman, I know that, if you don't mind, just for a second, ma'am, I know that Memorial Cemetery was mentioned. Do you have an instruction for us on that, to not discuss that due to litigation?
Yeah, first, to be clear, Memorial Cemetery is not city-owned. The city, however, is involved in litigation presently with, I believe it's a trust or an estate that has the property rights there. And so, given that, we're trying to steer clear of talking about it too much or saying anything that could negatively impact on that litigation.
Thank you. I say that, I know Councilman Gooz and I were out there for a work day about a month ago, so I just wanted to make that clear. I think, I'll speak at the end, but thank you guys for your presentation. Y'all, y'all really had a sense of urgency, and I use this term in a good way of righteousness. I mean that in a good way. Councilman. Oh, and I'm sorry, Ms. Janelle, I didn't see you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning, Councilman Janelle McGregor, Community Partnership Manager for the city of Tampa. I stand before you, just to ensure you, that Mayor Castor is very in tune with what's taking place here at Zion. Back on September twenty-eighth, she attended a memorial service to pay respects to those who laid a rest there at Zion. As well as Leroy mentioned, she attended the last archaeological task force meeting. This is in addition to meeting with members of Robles Park Resident Council Association as well. So, the mayor is a strong advocate for coming together with all those involved to find a respectful and honest resolution for what has taken place.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We'll go to Councilman Naskalko, then Councilman Dinkfelder, and you know what, we'll do this, then we'll just go on down the line for comments. But if I may, I need a motion for an extra thirty minutes.
Move to number twelve-thirty.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Naskalko, a motion, a second by Councilman Gooz, all in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? Go ahead, sir.
Well, first, thank you, Mr. Moore. Last month, you gave me a tour of Robles Park and showed me specifically where some of the, some of the graves were located in that, in that area. I'd met with some residents, I went into some of the units, some were moving out. I don't want to say they were, they were happy, but they were being taken care of and in a respectful manner. And I appreciate Paul Guzzo with The Times' work in bringing this forward, because this is a huge story, of course, from the era of Jim Crow, where blacks were treated in such a despicable manner. I mean, this is, this is beyond the pale. But I'm glad that you're moving swiftly and everybody's working together to find a, a good solution for this and do what's right, you know, now that it's going to be deemed historical, as it should have always been, and we can, you know, respect those that have passed away. And after the tour, I spoke with my mother, and she told me that in nineteen-sixty-three or so, her and my grandparents lived at Robles Park, after they came from Cuba and moved to Tampa, before going out to Forty-Eighth Street and East Tampa and buying their first home. But, you know, she has memories as a child there, and, I mean, she was just, I don't even know what the word is, but knowing that, you know, they could, they could have been staying above, you know, graves. So, at least we're doing the right thing, and hopefully, you know, this, of course, has expanded to more cemeteries that were lost and have now been found, but we're doing the right thing, and we're correcting the wrongs of history, and I'm glad that, that everybody's in unison and working together and finding a solution.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dinkfelder.
Mr. Manas Kalko and I have common sentiments, in addition to Mr. Guzzo, who's done a great job of reporting on this issue. I wanted to give a shout-out to a gentleman I've known a long time, Ray Reed, because he's just on a personal level, has, has done a huge amount of research and pointed Mr. Guzzo and the community to other areas, including Zion, that are suspected of being ignored and abused. One thing that I think we all have in common, the seven of us, is a love of history. And recently, I don't know, I don't know why exactly, but I, I was at the library and I picked up a book called Slavery in Florida. And it's a great book written by a FAMU professor, but I had no idea. I mean, I was born here in fifty-six, and, you know, I always thought about slavery as like, oh, you Alabama people, you Georgia people, you're bad, you know? And then reading this book about slavery in Florida, it was very real. I mean, I mean, it was mostly a lot of it north of us, because that's where the, that's where it was inhabited, from Jacksonville all the way across to Pensacola. But there was some even in the, even in the Bay Area as well, and Tampa, in very early Tampa. But slavery is, was here. And as, as my colleague mentioned, that, what did that lead to? Well, after slavery, Tampa became very populated with African-American population, and then Jim Crow came in in a big way with lynchings, and Florida was leading, leading the South with lynchings, I think in the early part of the nineteen-hundreds, which is nothing to brag about. And we've had really, kind of, really bad areas, like the scrub and possibly, I'm not sure about Robles Pond, where African-Americans were treated wrongly. Their conditions were horrific. And even when they had the dignity and the means to bury their, their family members, you know, what happened twenty, thirty years later? It just gets paved over, and it's so wrong and sad. But like so much of history, we can't undo the history, and a lot of people want to forget about history, those sort of tragic events, but we can't. We can't. It's our job to never forget. And I'm so thrilled that Mr. Moore and his team at Housing Authority and all the other partners are going to work on creating a park, and the city will be a good partner in that with Dennis and the rest of us. But not only, not only can we say we'll never forget, but I think that we can all unite and say never again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman Gooz.
You know, gentlemen, I always talk about experience. And a person's family who deals with the dead every week, the dead do speak. They do talk. And I've said this from day one, when that occurred, and I went out there, and I said, the dead is talking. It's time. History revolves and it changes. Our city's changing. Our mindset has to change. And that's why I asked, I asked the tough questions, to make sure the public knows what we're doing. When I asked council to go out to Robles, seven oh vote, we go. But we had some, some legal issues to try to get everybody together to get there, and the sunshine law, so my colleagues individually contacted Mr. Moore, and we're going out there, because the community was saying, where was council? And I had to let the community know that council is serious about this issue. And that's why I asked the question about the property to Mr. Moore, so people can know and we're transparent of what we're doing. I'm glad Ms. McGregor was here to talk about what the mayor's office is doing. So, we're all together in this thing, making sure that we're going to have a good solution with a final product for those who've gone on, who've suffered. So, for me, it's to make sure that we're doing the right things, there's transparency, because this is not going to be the last one we may find, but we have to be prepared and ready for when it does happen, that our boots are already on, and we know what to do already, and we get it done, and we get it done very quickly, so people can know that we are compassionate, city, council, and county commission, and school board. And I must say, Ms. Shamberg of the school board, she got right on that situation. It's King High School, you have to give her props, and they're on. I attended their, that meeting, and I tell you, it ran smooth, and they're moving. And I'm glad that we have people in place that understand the significance of the dead and understand, you know, people don't believe in superstition sometimes, but most black people, they believe in the spiritual dynamics. And when you're talking about the dead, it is very symbolic thing. So, I want to thank those who are involved and make sure that we're doing what we need to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Gooz. Councilman Sitwell, anything, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the men from Cardinal, also Paul Guzzo, and Tampa Housing Authority for moving quickly and swiftly on this. This has to be today forward. We have to think about our, our local cemeteries. There's a man in West Tampa who has taken a cemetery there and is buying back parcels so that he can make that historic designation. I would like to see the mayor, council, Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County School Board, state of Florida, all join together and looked at neglected, as, as this gentleman mentioned earlier, neglected cemeteries, and see what we can do to make them historic, so this type of thing doesn't happen. But we have to start today. I thank everybody that was involved for, for bringing this to the forefront, and we have to start looking to the future of our cemeteries.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Rand, anything, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Mr. Moore and all of the staff of Tampa Housing Authority. You didn't back up, you went forward as soon as you were notified, you started the process, and we're very grateful for that, and the product that you turned out, the identification with yourself and Cardinal and the rest of you are to be commended. It's not an easy thing to do. In fact, you actually start dying when you're born. You just don't know what day it is. And it's, it's hard to say those things, but it's a reality. And when you look at what's coming up, I would imagine that one of the property that you mentioned, maybe I shouldn't say it, but I will, King High School more likely going to have equal to or greater than what you found here. That's just what I've heard out in the street. I don't know if I'm sure or not. But again, thank you for what you've done, and for various reasons, all of us can't be at the same room, but at the same time, we violate the statute that we created to be who we are. And again, thanks again, appreciate it very much.
Councilman Carlson, anything, sir?
Yeah, it's a, this is a terrible chapter in our city's history, and thank you for taking this seriously and being proactive and trying to right a wrong and to try to finally give these folks the respect that they deserve. Thank you.
And thank you very much. I meant what I said, that when y'all spoke, and, you know, the term righteousness is sometimes negative, sometimes positive. The way y'all spoke, I could just sense a real passion in that I, anybody who knows me knows I have a real passion for United States history. Every year, my son and I, we always visit Arlington Cemetery, and we go to various places. One of the places we go is section twenty-seven, which has slaves, a bunch of unmarked graves, no names, many of them just say citizen. You know, this summer, it's, it's funny, Councilman Dinkfelder was talking about our history here in Florida, here in Tampa, and there's, you know, for folks who are looking for history on injustice, you can look right here. You can look in Florida, you can look in Tampa, and that's a sad fact. This summer, I took a couple of trips. I went to Marianna, Florida, to see the area where Claude Neal was lynched, if y'all knew Claude Neal. My son and I took a trip. I take them on a lot of serious trips. We went to Mississippi. We went to Ruvell to see Fannie Lou Hamer, Money, Mississippi, for Emmett Till, Jackson, Mississippi, for Medgar Evers. We went down the Mississippi Delta. We saw the old parchment prison. Then a little bit after that, we went to Alabama for Montgomery, for the Equal Justice Initiative, and in Selma. But if, there's tons of that here, like Councilman Dinkfelder said, you know, growing up in Temple Terrace, in a Hispanic family, growing up before I was ten, eleven, twelve, I never even knew Florida was part of the Confederacy up until I was nine, ten years old, because I just thought, we're the Tampa area, nosotros somos Tampa. You know what I mean? It, it doesn't seem like, quote-unquote, the South, but boy, oh, boy, we were right in the thick of it. And I'll tell y'all what, to see just how in the thick of it we were, look at eighteen-sixty-seven and what we did when we wrote in our constitution, voting restrictions that voters just got rid of last year through amendment four, when our state was one of the states that refused to support the Thirteenth, the Fourteenth, and the Fifteenth Amendments, and Congress said, look, y'all want to get back in the Union, you guys got to let folks vote. Well, Florida said, sure, we'll let folks vote, but we're going to put things into like poll taxes, literacy tests, and felony restrictions, something that we just got rid of allegedly a year ago. That's our history. We have to know our history, we got to face up to our history, we got to know how we got here today, and we can't be afraid to look at it and to look at the ugly things. And I do mean ugly, because when I look at these names here, that's ugly. Eso es feo, that's ugly. And I just said, that's ugly in Spanish, because when I get passionate, sometimes I speak Spanish. But that's ugly, that's about as ugly as you get. And I think we're all here united to honor these folks and to honor them, and to make sure that, that our young people learn all of our history, so that we know where we came from, we know how we got here, we know the many good things about our country, and God knows, there's a ton of good things about our country. My parents were refugees, we came here, a lot of good things about our country, but there's a lot of bad things about our country. But like, I think it was, I think it was President Clinton that said this, which is, the things that are right about America can heal the things that are wrong about America. And I, I really do believe that. So, thank you very much. Okay, next, we move- we move to item number 55, it would appear. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Gregory Hart, manager, Equal Business Opportunity Program. I'm here on item 55 to address the request for an update regarding small business participation on the San Carlos Pump Station Rehab Project.
And I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting you. For council members, we have this and then second readings, which we should be able to get through for purposes of the public who's here for second readings here today. Do you want to go ahead and do second readings right now?
Yes, I will take two minutes.
Okay, will it take two minutes? Whose was it? Was it...
Mine.
Okay, we'll do two minutes. How about this? 55, 56. 56, how long do you think that'll take? Okay, okay. So in other words, to the public, you have my commitment here to move forward with second readings before we break for lunch, and we're going to break for lunch at 12:30. And we can do it. So we can do it if I stop talking. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Again, I'm here on item 55, an update on the small business participation for the San Carlos Pump Station Rehab. One thing I would like to make clear is that the agenda item, there appears to be a Scrivener's error. It refers to this project being managed by Woodruff. This project was awarded to Garnet Construction Company. That being said, we are in the early stages of construction. We're basically in the mobilization stage. So it's very premature to provide you with any substantive utilization report. There's just nothing occurring at this moment, except for mobilization. There has been a conditional permit issued. That was just late November. And some other site permit requirements are being processed as I speak. So there's really nothing to report to you, council, at this time.
Any questions?
I want to carry it over and correct it. What's the name of the company?
It's Garnet Construction Company, not Woodruff. G-A-R-N-E-Y.
Okay, so correcting that and carrying over item 55 to the March 19 date, which will run parallel with 56. So we can keep getting updates on how these big multimillion-dollar projects are doing in regard to WMBA. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dinkfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
And does that dispose of 55 and 56, sir?
No, 56 was Guido's.
Oh, I'm sorry, Guido. Go ahead, sir. Are you here for 56?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
56 is for the update on small business participation for the Cypress Street Outfall Square Water Project. This project was awarded to Woodruff, and it too is in the early construction phase. There's been limited activity. They're dealing with surety bonds and some of the administrative processes. The notice to proceed has been issued, but no real construction activity to speak of has occurred. So it's a little premature.
Anything? Okay, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Okay, now we circle back to item number 40. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman, I think it was, Amanda Scalkow, a second, I think, by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're here for item 40, it would appear.
Chairman, did you want to...
Yes, yeah. Okay, anybody here for 40? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Could you swear, everybody? Thank you, sir. If you're here to speak on a quasi judicial matter, please stand if you're able to do so, raise your right hand and be prepared to be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, council members. Dennis Fernandez, Architecture Review and Historic Preservation Manager, here on item number 40. We do typically give a full, more extended presentation as second reading, but just to introduce the property, this is a recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission for the local landmark designation of the Junta Homestead and Farm, which is located in the eastern part of Ybor City, within the boundaries of the Ybor City Historic District. This is an aerial showing the boundaries of the farm. This farm was originally the homestead for Victoria and Salvatore Junta, who emigrated from Sicily in the early 1900s and began to serve as laborers in Ybor City, very typical to many of the stories that we hear. However, this story becomes very unique in that they worked the farms of East Ybor City and created a homestead that still exists today and still exists as a working farm. As far as I know, it would be the last Sicilian immigrant farm in the city. The Historic Preservation Commission did find that the property does meet the designation criteria within the code, does satisfy the National Register criteria for agricultural, ethnic heritage, architecture, community planning, and development. And also, it's anticipated that there could be some archaeological discoveries in the farm portion. The owners, the great grandchildren of Victoria and Salvatore are here today, Beatrice and Victoria Junta, and I appreciate their patience and working with them. They really had a wealth of information that we were able to refer to as we worked through this designation process. So thank you. And if you have any questions?
Can they stand up, or are they... Oh, there you go. Hey, guys, welcome. Thank you. Councilman Carlson, did you have a question?
Can I make a comment?
Oh, yeah, of course you may.
I just, if it's appropriate, I just want to thank the Junta Sisters for being so persistent. They gave me a tour a couple of years ago, and it tells a story of Ybor that we need to preserve. And it's a different kind of story. And the thing I was most impressed about is that you said, "What was it? Your grandfather brought seeds," and you're still growing the same products, and a lot of them aren't even available in the United States right now. So it's a really interesting story. Thank you.
And Councilman Dinkfelder?
A shout out to the Junta Sisters. And I think we met back in '03. I was taking a tour, and Linda Solcena says, "Oh, you've got to meet the Junta Sisters, and they're doing wonderful things and continuing your family's legacy and heritage and all the way to today." And I know you're planning on continuing that with a trust, and that's fantastic. I remember very clearly, one of the things that we shared together was either you guys or your ancestors grew celery out there, because it was kind of mucky, a mucky area, which is conducive to celery. And I think I mentioned to you that my dad's father, my grandfather, based out of Plant City at the time, used to be a celery buyer. And he would buy the celery and ship it to New York, where celery apparently was king back then as a real delicacy. But anyway, I hope that our families perhaps met back then and are meeting again now. So congratulations and best of luck on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Councilman Citro, do you want to take this one?
Open the floor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, public comment. Is anybody here to publicly comment on item number 40? If so, please come forward. Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Amanda Scalkow, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, a housekeeping matter for purposes of this ordinance, you do have a substitute ordinance being offered. I'd like council to make a separate motion to accept the substitutes with the original exhibits from the original ordinance being attached to it.
May I have that motion?
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Scalkow, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you. And now, if you can, read the substitute. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd just like to thank the Junta Sisters for keeping their family's history alive and still for working the land. Thank you to both Junta Sisters. I have a substitute ordinance being considered for the first reading, excuse me, in file number A2019-1. I have a substitute ordinance being considered for reading. An ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, designating the Junta Homestead and Farm located...
Oh, second.
Thank you. Located at 2401 East 11th Avenue, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in Section 3 thereof, as a local landmark, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing a separability, providing effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Dinkfelder. Oh, we got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, second reading and adoption will be held on, excuse me, January 9, 2020, at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, ma'am. And before we go forward, staff, clerks, y'all are okay with another 20 minutes?
I'm fine.
Okay, we go 41. Anybody here for 41?
Kate Wells, City Attorney's Office. This is second reading. First reading was on November 14. I believe Brad Baird was present at the time and addressed questions that you had with regard to the updated schedule of projects, but I'm available to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody here to publicly comment on 41? If so, please come forward. Motion. Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Amanda Scalkow, do you, sir, mind taking 41?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Capital Improvement Section by replacing the Capital Improvement Schedule of Projects with the Capital Improvement Schedule of Projects for fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 2024, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for separability, providing an effective date.
Second. With motion by Councilman Amanda Scalkow, a second by Councilman Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
All righty, item number 42.
Mary S. Miega, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Items number 42 through 46 are all second readings from your evening hearing on November 14. All required changes have been made or in the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Applicant.
Good afternoon, council. Real quick on item 42, which pertains to Salvation Army...
Your name for the record.
Sorry, Tyler Hudson, 400 North Ashley Drive. The Salvation Army second reading here is for the rezoning. You might recall, there's a separate right-of-way vacation that is scheduled for second reading next Thursday, kind of like two toddlers who are astray. We need both of those to happen on the same night. So we'd like to continue item 42, the second reading on the rezoning, to next Thursday to coincide with the second reading on the right-of-way vacation.
Isn't that, that's for the evening section?
I believe so, yes, because morning C.R.A.
Show move.
We have a motion from...
Yes, just the date and time, please, again, just for the purposes of the record would be then December 12 at 6:00 p.m.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Miranda, a second, from Councilman Goos. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on just the continuance? This is being continued to next Thursday evening. All right, saying none. Do we have a motion to, do we have a motion to close?
You're done.
It's done? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 43. Item number 43.
If y'all going to speak, may I ask the chairman to move forward?
Anyone that has any cases coming up, 43, 4, 5, if you're going to speak, just if you want to sit closer to the front. Yep. All right, go ahead.
Devin Damon with Phelps Dunbar, here on behalf of the property owner, E.A. M.M.P., and Dr. Alberto Morales. Our consultants are here as well, if you have any questions. Otherwise, we respectfully request final approval of the rezoning application.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the board? No, saying none. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on item number 43? We have a motion to close from Councilman Goos, a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, we have Councilman Goos, if you wouldn't mind taking item number 43.
File number REZ19-72, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3704 West Uklav Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from the zoning district classification RO-1 residential office to PD Plan Development Medical Office, business professional office, club space, a religious assembly, bank catering, shop, pharmacy, providing effective date.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Goos, with a second. And Councilman Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carried with the air being absent.
All right, thank you very much. Item number 44. Item number 44.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name for the record.
Caitlin Adon.
Okay.
While the city, the council has been requested revised for the plans that we have been submitted, and we expecting to have a final approval.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but I believe that I voted no on this one. This is the one that's got lot 49, 49 feet instead of 50 on corner of Armenian Kentucky. I'll check the tape, because I'm sure I voted against. That's the one that 49 feet. Am I correct?
Yes.
Do you want to, do you want to have...
No, no, I don't. My memory's pretty good.
Yes.
My hair's gone, but I think pretty well.
I bet for one brain cell.
You're right. Problem is, a lot of us don't have any.
Do you want to hold off on the vote?
No, 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 you can vote on it.
Sure, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So, Mr. Miranda, it looks like I was absent. Can you at least refresh my memory or perhaps inform me of what your issue was?
I don't have an issue. I just want to vote against.
Okay.
My privacy, my privacy. Can I request anybody to vote?
Any comments on how I vote?
I was just hoping you might...
I understand. Thank you very much.
...inform me, but thank you.
Okay. Is there any, did we do public comment?
Yeah, we're going to probably not now.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am. Is anybody here to publicly comment on item number 44? If so, please come forward.
Move to close.
Motion to close by Councilman Amanda Scalkow, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Who's next?
I'll take it if you would like to.
Go ahead. No, no, it went to Dinkfelder. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Dinkfelder, are you comfortable reading this, sir?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. I'll move with the following ordinance for second reading and adoption regarding file number REZ19-87. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2301 West Kentucky Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classifications RS50 residential single-family to PD Plan Development residential single-family detached, provide an effective date, provide an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Dinkfelder, a second by Councilman Amanda Scalkow. Please record your vote.
Motion carried with the brand of...
Okay, thank you very much. 45, anyone here for 45?
Good afternoon, Jackie Ross, and just here for the second reading, requesting your approval.
Okay, any questions? Okay, and thank you for your patience for waiting this morning. We appreciate it. Anybody here in the public here to comment on item number 45?
Move to close.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Scalkow, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, who wants to take this one?
I'll take it, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, file number REZ19-95, item 45, moving ordinance presented for second reading adoption, ordinance rezoning property general vicinity 4001 North Merle Avenue, City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification PD Plan Development, business professional office to SG, SHCG, similar height commercial general, providing an effective date.
Second. Motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Scalkow. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Now we move to our last item, 46. Anybody here for 46? Yeah, we're going to, I think, continue that. Yes.
Hey, Don, Philip Houston, Jr. Philip Houston, senior, here, sponsored for 3221 Mesa Paxton, here for the second reading. I think we're looking for your approval on the last one. Not sure if we need to go back over.
I don't think so. I don't think so. And we thank senior and junior for your patience today.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Any questions for senior and junior? Okay. Anybody here from the public here to comment on item number 46?
Move to close.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Scalkow, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Amanda Scalkow, you want to take this one?
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll give it to Citro.
Give it to Citro. Whoever. It's the last one.
File number REZ nineteen ninety-six, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of three two two one West Paxton Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, RS sixty residential single-family to RS fifty residential single-family, providing effective date.
Second. Motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, forty-seven apparently is going to be. A motion. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, in file number D S R twenty dash zero one, I move for a continuance to February sixth.
Second. And before. Okay, motion by Councilman Scalko, a second by, I'll just give it to Joe Citro, a second by Joe Citro. Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then before we move on that continuance, is anybody here to speak on the continuance solely for item number forty-seven? Go ahead, sir.
Item forty-seven?
And this is, sir, solely on the continuance, but come on forward.
Not only whether to brick it or not?
No, only on the continuance.
Okay.
If, tell you what, if you want to give us forty-five seconds.
I don't know what is, whether that would be appropriate to do that at this point, to take testimony on this.
It's probably better to continue.
Okay.
Probably better.
I just felt bad because you waited for so long. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your patience.
I thought there were going to be more people here.
Well, excuse me, I'm sorry, sir. You may not have, you may not have been here, or you may have missed it, but we had mentioned that early on that this item was going to be continued, and actually somebody did speak to it about the fact that they recognized they were going to have to come back on February sixth.
We hope you were least entertained.
February sixth, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, you won't be getting any further, you won't be getting any further notice about that, so please make sure you make a note. And what is your name for the record, sir?
My name is Morris Pollara.
Okay.
P U L L A R A. I'm a resident of eleven oh eight North Franklin. I overlook this particular stretch of the street and would like to see it great.
We appreciate your time. Thank you, sir. We have a motion to continue.
Do we need a tie? Excuse me, council, do we need a tie for that? Is that nine o'clock a.m.?
Actually, no, that would be ten thirty a.m.
Ten thirty a.m., thank you.
Okay, and who did that motion to continue? Was it you, sir?
You did.
Okay, Councilman Citro, a second, I believe, by Councilman Amanda Scalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And again, Mr. Chairman, for those who are listening for item forty-seven, it's February sixth, twenty twenty, at ten thirty a.m. Just so the bit clear, that's the only notice they'll be receiving on this item.
Thank you, sir. Okay, motions, et cetera, Councilman Carlson, anything, sir? Councilman Miranda, anything, sir?
None, sir.
Councilman Citro?
Nothing.
Councilman Scalko?
Very happy birthday to Little Richard, who is eighty-seven today.
That's funny. Go ahead, sir. Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to give a commendation to Dr. Samuel Wright, Sr., founder of the Tampa Bay Black Heritage Festival and the Tampa Bay Convention and Bureau, Visitors Bureau. As a major contributor, he had a vision to rise, raise awareness of the African-American heritage in the Tampa Bay area and surrounding community. I present this commendation, Dr. Wright, at the regular session of City Council on January ninth, twenty twenty.
Motion by Councilman Goode, a second, I believe, by Councilman Scalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, Councilman Goode?
That's it, sir, thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder, anything, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The International Diplomatic Corps of Florida is having a Holocaust commemoration on January nineteenth. They've requested proclamation or commendation from the council. So with your approval, I would be glad to go present it on our behalf. That's my motion.
Yes, sir. And before you do that, you know, I must confess, I had never been to the Florida Holocaust Museum in St. Petersburg. I've been to the one in DC probably eight, nine times, but that is just through the roof. It is, it is amazing. So my hat is off to St. Pete for that. That is amazing. But we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second, I think, Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Not today, thank you.
Okay, I got a couple of things, if I may. I'm the guy with many today. I motion for a representative from the Fines and Fees Justice Center to come present before City Council a regular session on December nineteenth to discuss the state's driver's license suspension program and how it is counterproductive and ineffective and disproportionately punishes poor people. The center is working on legislation in Tallahassee, including with representatives here in Tampa, to address this injustice, and I would like to have City Council be aware of these efforts.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera with a second from Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And thank you, and a couple other things briefly. I motion for Parks and Recreation to appear and discuss a report on the status of the improvement schedule for Forest Hills Recreation Center at the January twenty-third, two thousand twenty meeting. That is something that has been budgeted time, including this year, time and time again. The people of Forest Hills at the Rec Center have been waiting for those improvements for, I think, five or six years after it was originally budgeted, and there continue to be stormwater challenges.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera with a second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
And again, that date, sir, was January twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yes, sir. And then this is for no appearance. It's, y'all know the Nextdoor app, you know, Nextdoor? That is a great way to communicate to our constituents, and I know the city of Tampa has a profile on all the different sites. I can only access the one in Hunter's Green. I motion for a report with no appearance necessary by the administration on how each city council member can get their own, if we wish, Nextdoor profile in whatever neighborhoods we want within our districts or within the city.
If I can add, sir, if you can amend that to also include, to comply with Florida law regarding public records and public.
Oh, yes, of course, yep. And we'll need, we'll need a little bit of advice on that if it happens, as you know.
Well, actually, actually, I just want to thank Mr. Chairman for raising the issue because the concept of social media and the concept of apps such as that, there are municipalities that do have ability to archive and retrieve and comply with Florida law within the city's servers. So that would be worthy of discussion.
I'm very active on Nextdoor, and I find it to be useful ninety-seven percent of the time.
We have a.
Yes. January twenty-third is fine. But again, no appearance necessary.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera with a second from?